All right. Good evening. Hope everyone's doing well. I'm glad that this worked out on such short notice. I'll call this meeting to order and I'll ask Ms. Thomas to do roll call for the city and then turn it over to Ms. Torres.
Mayor Walker?
Present.
Vice Mayor Leguill?
Here.
Counselor Hill?
I'm here and almost at my desk. Thank you.
Counselor Payne?
Here.
Counselor Snook?
Here.
Thank you, Chair Torres.
Thank you, Mayor Walker, and yes, thank you to everybody for the ability to meet and talk together. I'll call the meeting to order for Charlottesville City Schools. And Madam Clerk, Ms. Green, would you call roll for the school board, please?
Brian?
Present.
Ms. Morseberger?
Here.
Dr. Krab?
Present.
Ms. Bekever?
Here.
Ms. Corrier?
Present.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Walker, thank you for having us. I believe we do have a presentation. I don't know if Dr. Atkins, if you'd like to address that presentation, or if City Manager Boils, if you'd like to.
Yeah. Yes, if I could just welcome everyone. Thank you for being here, as both the chairperson and the mayor have said. And I know for especially for some of the school officials, it's been a very full day, a very long day. We started out together very early today. A couple of quick things, if I may. I'll go through the agenda and just a couple of introductory budget items that we wanted to get before the city council. And also is relevant to the school board, and then we'll turn it over to you for your presentation and initiating the discussion. The agenda for tonight is a quick review of some changes to our FY22 budget. There have been some positive changes since the last time that we've met, and we wanted to touch on a couple of those. Then open up the floor for discussion regarding the Charlottesville City School funding and budgets. Then city council after that. The scheduled meeting for today, which should begin sometime around 6:00, is to review the outside and nonprofit agency funding, which includes both our contractual agencies and the vibrant community fund agencies. As we wrap that up, staff will provide any input and receive direction of where we go from here. And then at that point, I know that we'll want to open it up for public comment from the many people that we have watching us tonight. What I do want to, and some of the changes from the FY22 budget that has previously been presented to the mayor and council, I'm very happy to say that we do have some positive changes. With our business and professional licenses, new estimates have come in, both from the state and with us looking at these internally. And we feel very comfortable increasing our FY22 estimates to $950,000. The weather's getting better, vaccinations are happening, and just a lot more activity is occurring. So that's a very positive change for us. And looking at our budget and with the help of the council, staff, and the community, we've been able to decrease a couple of expenditure items, transfer to the capital improvement program from some police department expenditures that will save us $255,000. And then combined savings from both the school and our police department with a reduction of school crossing guards is another savings of $55,307. So the bottom line is the good news of we do have an extra $1,260,000 that we'll be able to consider other changes to our budget. Clearly, everybody was following the news yesterday with Congress's approval and passage of the Federal Recovery Act. And Charlottesville is expecting to see just in excess of $10 million from that act. We aren't totally clear as to what we can spend it on, or more importantly, what we can't spend that on. So we'll be working with that in the future and working with council, with our departments, and with the community on areas there. I do caution, I think the one thing we know for sure is that we want to be very, very cautious of not trying to spend that money on reoccurring expenses. And we'll be looking predominantly at one type, one-time expenses such as capital improvements and other one-time operating expenses for these funds. So with that, I will turn it over very quickly then to Ryan, who I think is going to run us through just a couple of slides that you all have seen before regarding the school budgeting and funding from the city, and then turn it over to both the school board and then for city council's discussion. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Boils. So we just wanted to start with the part of our discussion at our work session last week. We had brought up two slides related to the findings for the schools. And this is our first slide here. This shows, these are the charts we put in front of council every year that shows, the chart on the left-hand side shows if we had stuck with nothing but the 40% contribution target for our funding, where the funding would be versus, which is the blue bars versus the red line, which is where our funding has, our contribution has been for the schools. The orange or yellow, it's hard to see on this particular screen, the yellowish bar at the end is what was being projected for FY23, which is that $4.5 million increase to cover the one-time funding that's the schools are proposing to use for their FY22 budget. The, excuse me, the chart on the right-hand side shows the 40%, what, 40% of the actual real estate and personal property has been for the city of Charlottesville over the past 10 years and our projected increases for FY23, and then what our actual contribution has been over that same amount of time. The purpose was to highlight that there would be a large jump in FY23, given that what's been proposed with the schools FY22 budget. Next slide. As we discussed with council last night, we provided three options as for staff for council to discuss. The first option was to adopt as submitted for '22 and '23, city contribution level for FY22. The increase of the $4.5 million now becomes the new base, and this is similar to the scenario we had with the gifted teacher program between the FY20 and FY21 budget, where there was an adjustment in that they added that to the base. This would be, this would be similar to those charts on the previous page that showed that large increase in the city contribution for the first year. Option two would be to reduce the '22 school budget and use the savings to fund some items that had to initially be removed from the city's budget to, in order to balance. There's a listing of those there, and we have shared the full listing with the city council previously, and that was another area to look at. And then option three was to adopt the school's proposal as submitted for FY23 only at the $58.7 million, but not adopt or not have the assumption that the $4.5 million increase would be a given in FY23, that that funding and that increase in funding would have to be considered as part of the FY23 budget process and go into, essentially go into the mix with all the other city departmental items and any other items that may come up between now and a year from now, essentially. And so we just wanted to reshare those slides with you as we had had some discussion around those last week. And with that, I think we're now ready to turn it over to the school's portion of the presentation.
Ms. Torres, I'll get started.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council and City Manager Boils, for inviting us and meeting with us to further discuss the budget. We appreciate being able to present our budget funding requests to you recently, and we are delighted to come back and respond to some of the questions that you might, you have about our budget. So what I'd like to do is the next slide is to go over the four topics that we're going to cover, and these represent some of the questions that have come up from city council members relative to our budget. So number one, understanding the funding mechanisms tied to the 5% increase in the salary as mandated by the governor, and I wouldn't use the word mandated, as proposed by the governor. Discuss also the impact of reducing the school's budget year-to-year budget. And further discuss the impacts and potential risk if CCS budget is not fully adopted. And then any updates on the school's funds from the state, as well as a timeline for the potential funds from CARES III that City Manager Boils made reference to that is on the president's desk, and is it anticipated that the president will sign that legislation on tomorrow? So what I'd like to do now is ask Kim Powell to go over just a few slides with you to respond to those questions, and then we'll open it up to answer any additional questions or discussions that you may have. Kim?
Thank you, Dr. Atkins, City Manager Boils, council members and school board members. Thanks for having us. And the slide that was previously up about the four topics, that was actually just us copying and pasting in the four questions that were sent in advance because we wanted to acknowledge that we received those. We are answering number one and number four first because that number two and three kind of we felt went better together conversationally, but you'll see that we'll cover all of these topics that were sent to us in advance. Okay, thank you. Next slide. So for the question about the 5% increase, it's not a mandate. That's the way the topic was conveyed to us, but it isn't a mandate, but it does have real funding tied to it, whether or not we comply with that. Basically, we received a superintendent's memo that you see referenced here. These are available in the Virginia Department of Education website. And if you look at attachment A for that superintendent's memo that was issued March 9th, we get a summary of all the budget amendments that come through the process in Richmond and the General Assembly budget, which of course is what happens. We go from each year, the governor's budget, House and Senate proposals, and then the conference budget. And so what we're looking at now is the end product of that process. And what we have is the state giving us additional money to fund a 5% compensation supplement. And we even, we sought clarification. This must be in the form of a salary increase. It cannot be a one-time bonus payment. It must be a salary increase. And so in order to receive the state funding that's been appropriated to us to do this action, we have to certify that we take that action for all what they call SOQ-funded instructional and support positions. And so we talk about teachers, and when you read the headlines, it'll say 5% for teachers, but it really does go beyond that to different, you know, principals, assistant principals, instructional assistants, even, you know, custodial staff, and some division administration positions are all touched by this in the SOQ. And SOQ stands for standards of quality, but it's really not quality. It's just the funding formula the state uses in determining how to appropriate the K-12 funds to each locality in the state. So that's the language directly from the announcement, if you will, from Richmond. And we can go to the next slide now, and certainly it's, this is not a big slide deck. We can return to any of these that the council or board members would like to. So then the fourth question was an update on schools' funding from the state and a timeline to know about further CARES funds. And City Manager Boils already referenced the, it's not called CARES money now. This next round is called the American Rescue Plan. But first, let's focus on the state funding. So what, what the school board couldn't know when they approved the superintendent's proposed budget is exactly what that 5% would mean as far as additional state funds for us by the time the, but the Calc tool has since come out, and so we know what it means. And it resulted in an additional $358,701 for Charlottesville City Schools. And that's what's in the Calc tool for us. And if you have been following our, our process, the impact that that has is in the bottom-right corner where you see minimum projected carryforward of our CARES funds. Well, now that we know what our additional state funding is tied in part to that 5% salary action, and if you looked at our old slides, it was only $394,124 that we thought we would be carrying forward. Now it's $752,825. So more state money means we would definitely have more of our current CARES funds available to carry forward to FY2023. Now, beyond the carryforward of our CARES I/CARES II money, now there's this American Rescue Plan or ARP money that the president is expected to sign off on tomorrow. And these funds, we've seen enough language to know that these funds are to be used for health and safety, to reopen schools, and to address learning loss and social, emotional needs of students. We've, we've seen that language. We don't know exactly how this $125 billion for K-12 is going to translate into what we actually get for Charlottesville City Schools. But I can tell you that from the, you know, our first round of CARES funding was, hold on just a moment. Let's see, one was almost 1.2 million, and our second round of CARES funding, the CARES II money, was almost 4.5 million. You know, I don't know exactly what, whether this will result in something around 1.2 or 4.5 or something in between. But it is a considerable amount of additional money going to K-12.
And do you know how?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you know how long you have to spend that, what max money may be? Okay.
Yeah, but what's interesting there is we do know that the CARES II money can carry into at least the first quarter of fiscal year.
Twenty-four.
Or 20, Renee, you're on.
Fiscal year, 24.
Right, that's right.
It's down to September 2023.
Right, so that takes us into '24. That's right. And that money didn't, did not have many restrictions on it. It was very, it's fairly unrestricted, so you can do a lot even just with payroll expense in that first quarter. Yeah, so you have to see what the rules are for this next round.
Can you remind me the line item for the staff increases at 5%? What does that amount to for the, for one year, for the year?
Oh, 1.6, hold on.
I think it's 1.66.
1.6, I was looking.
Yeah, I have it somewhere. I just didn't have it.
I've got it. Oh, wait a minute.
1.9.
Right.
That was for teachers, and then we had, would need to add in the support staff, administrative staff.
Which is $321,041 for the non-teaching staff.
And then the administrative staff would be $545,000.
Yes. We'd have to add those together.
So it's 1.6, 300,000, and then the 500?
1.9.
Yeah, I was wrong, Heather, sorry.
It totals $2,767,702.
Thank you, Renee. The thing, one of the things that happens, one of the big factors, the local composite index of ability to pay for Charlottesville City is six, I think it's around 0.64%. So whatever actions are taken in the state budget process for Charlottesville, they're expected to pick up close to, between 62% and 65% of that cost. And then there's a whole other narrative, which would take too long, about how the state doesn't have a good lens on what the true average salaries are in the Commonwealth and all that. But anyway, we won't go there. But just know that we, whatever great things come out of the state budget in Richmond, the local composite index then comes to bear on that to dictate the actual funds that flow down to us to comply with those actions. If there are no other questions on this slide, and again, there aren't many slides in this deck, we can always come back to any of these. I also would point out that the current budget proposal represents a 6.4% increase overall. And next slide. So then the last couple of questions were about the impacts of reducing the school's year-to-year budget and the impacts or risks of adopting a budget that may not be sustainable because it does include use of one-time funds. The first three pieces of this slide come directly from slides we've been showing throughout the process. We always acknowledge that city funding is the foundation and key for any, for the programming and services that Charlottesville schools are able to offer. And if you follow Jim Regenbaugh's work at the state level, this is true for every locality. What ultimately determines the quality or the offerings of any public school system in Virginia is what the locality does or doesn't do. That's universal across the Commonwealth. COVID-19 has had significant impacts on our families. You all know this. It's impacted our students emotionally, academically, economically, and the staff has worked really hard to do a lot of different things in this environment and pivoting to work in different models. And we've always had this caution included in every presentation we've done, I think, since January. We want to be very, we want to put it in a flashing neon sign that this budget proposal does, you know, hinges on the use of one-time non-recurring funding. But there's an element in here where we also want to, we want to leverage that funding as much as possible to provide a ramp or a runway for city revenue recovery. There's a lot of Rs in there. And we acknowledge that any additional appropriation, if the city had any additional funds, they wanted to appropriate to K-12 for the coming year, that would start, that would start the process of, you know, taking down that dependence on one-time funds. The converse of that, and this is in response to one of the questions, any reductions to the current appropriation for operations for fiscal year '22 would simply make that revenue recovery need greater for FY2023. It would make that curve steeper, if you will. So it's, that's the simple answer to that question. And if the funds are not available, and this has always been in that green caution message, you know, that just as with any budget in any organization, cuts to services would be required if there were significant shortfalls in the revenues that could be provided to offset these one-time funds. And I believe the next slide may just, oh, there's one more. This slide is just a reference back to the city's, the city's Blue Ribbon Commission on Sustainable School Funding. And I really think it's amazing that the work that that group did, and this was before my time in the city, but that, that group from in 2014 put forward that it could be expected that to maintain and sustain, maintain the level, the depth and breadth, the programming that Charlottesville City Schools offers to the, for the community, that it, it could be expected or should be expected that 2 to 4 million additional funding would be required each year to keep, to keep moving forward or maintain the level of programming. And this was back in 2014. And it always, it never ceases to amaze me in the time I've been here how that forecast or that projection or this summation of that study still holds true today.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. And I'll add a closing comment to that presentation. I will say to city council that during the development of this budget, there were several priorities we had in looking at programs and maintaining staffing and instructional delivery. And there were two considerations that we used to develop this budget. The first one was that we recognized that COVID had an impact on the revenue coming into the city. So our first consideration was to attempt to develop a budget that would keep us at level funding and not ask the city, in light of those revenue shortfalls based on COVID, not ask the city for additional funding for FY22. The second consideration was that at the time that we were developing the budget, we were notified about the CARES II dollars and the availability of those dollars, and also given some guidance on how we might appropriate those dollars and the spend-down schedule for it. With using that information, knowing that our students were coming back face-to-face, it presented an opportunity for us to not only be able to respond to the significant needs that we feel that our students will have when they return to the classroom, supports that our teachers will need as they return, but also allow us to adhere to that first consideration, not to have to ask city council to increase funding for the FY22 budget, that we would be frugal in the way that we use the CARES dollars and use them in a way that responded to an immediate need, understanding that in future budgets that we would have to reconcile that, and there would be multiple ways in which we could reconcile that. And one of those ways would be additional funding, or we would have to consider cutting some of those positions or cutting some positions or services in our school division in order to reconcile that. But we felt like those two considerations had great weight as we developed this budget. So we appreciate council allowing us to answer those questions, and we will be glad to answer any other questions or discussions. And I'll turn it back over to Ms. Torres.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powell, Dr. Atkins. And I believe the questions that you all showed on the first slide were questions that directly came from city council, and so we are happy to address any further questions at this point.
Can we go into a discussion mode, Brian, by chance? Thank you.
I mean, I think I did go back and I do have to say, it is really challenging when we're having meetings and you guys are having work sessions at the same time. So I did go back and listen to your work session to try and get a sense of where you all were coming from and where some of your questions, you know, or what they were around. So I hope that we've, we've answered some of them, but we're happy to, you know, take further questions or more specific questions. I mean, I know that there were specific questions around the positions, you know, as far as the program supports and improvements that were part of our budget. You know, so if you have specific questions about those, we're more than happy to speak to, speak to those, you know, specifically. And I would imagine we could pull that slide up again if you all don't have it. But again, I think each of those programs, whether it be something like internet access for our students or, you know, the instructional assistance, which we had had to eliminate the prior year due to level funding, I mean, we're happy to address those, but I think we really did work hard to establish those positions and invest in things that we thought would make the biggest impact on our students coming back this next year, especially after the year that we've all had. So again, looking at equity, you know, whether it's a teacher in a building, a math specialist that, you know, hadn't been present at the high school, that's going to be able to provide, you know, specific supports to students that may not have had it but are looking to, you know, potentially take AP-level courses or even supports to teachers in how that they can, you know, provide better supports, again, whether it's instructionally or to some of those students. You know, a reading specialist, I mean, that was another one of the positions that we had. Again, literacy is huge for all of us. This year, our teachers have worked and entire staff has worked incredibly hard to adapt to virtual and now hybrid and virtual again. But again, literacy is such a huge and important piece to just education and who we are as humans, and it opens the door for all of us. So I mean, there, again, I don't want to go line by line, but I mean, I'm happy to, or we are happy to, to answer those questions, but I really don't. I mean, I've looked through these, these line items, and there's, I don't see anything that we didn't put into it that wasn't with the student in mind and equity in mind.
And I know I had asked this once in the last, and just to get on the same page again, there's none of those positions you feel are unique to COVID that after one- There's none of those positions you feel are unique to COVID that after one, two years from now may not be needed. I certainly recognize the acute needs in many ways, but I'm just trying to get a sense for, obviously, we're just, our interest is in trying to minimize the number of operational costs that are being, that we can't, that we're going to have to basically recover from in a year.
I mean, I'd be curious, I mean, if you had a sense or if you were more specific on what you think might be unique to COVID. I mean, I know we have a lot of positions for our social workers, but we are really, we are moving towards that as a model we, we value as a school division. So those, you know, in my opinion, and they're not temporary. I mean, as we move to adapt and change our SRO system in the high schools, you know, I mean, the, the social worker positions and social work support positions. I mean, I think those are crucial. I think that's something that the public has asked for and we as a board are fully supportive of and something that, you know, we want to maintain long-term.
Ms. Torres, I would add to your comments that, that in the development of the budget, we make sure that we gather information from our staff, from our teaching staff, our administrative staff. So many of these positions and services and items represent direct requests that have come from our staff members, our building level staff members about what their needs are and what they see as supports that are necessary for them to continue to offer high-level services to all of our students and respond to the needs of our students.
No, I certainly understand that in the city, we have the same thing with our departments, you know, that we're, we're level funding, certainly expressing that there's a lot of need there that we just can't meet. And I think we're just trying to determine the best way to bridge between today and what the next couple of years looks like. I do feel encouraged by the thought of additional funding becoming available. If we can feel confident that that can continue that ramp so that we're not looking at a year from now, going from where we are now to four and a half million dollars more in one year, having to do that in order to maintain these positions. And obviously, that's all your decision, we just determine the overall number. But I just, I do have, I continue to have anxiety over doing that blindly without like seeing that ramp over a longer period of time. And also just, as we've said again and again, like our, at this point, I'm hopeful that will change with some of the new revenue pictures that Mr. Boyle's presented earlier. You know, we don't have even a COLA of 2% in for our staff. And so we're just trying to balance that out as well.
Definitely appreciate that.
To sort of follow up a little bit on, on that, I would, I don't know any sort of politically correct way to say this, so let me say it just sort of bluntly. It's hard for us to figure out how to justify a budget request to the school system that implies, number one, roughly 18, maybe 18.5 new FTEs, a 5% raise for staff at a time when we don't see how we can give ourselves, our employees a raise. And we don't see being able to add additional staff. And so the, the thing that is giving us, at least giving me at least, heartburn is this, this notion of you all have, have a vision, it seems, of, of getting back up to speed a lot faster than the rest of the city government is likely to be able to do. Our ability to get the rest of city government up to speed is going to be handicapped if we fully fund the additional money that, that you want. And so our problem is to balance, number one, your your ambitions, your desires, your goals, however we want to characterize it, versus the reality that if we fund those for you, we can't do it for the rest of the city government. Help me figure this thing out. Is there a way to, to, to get to a middle position here someplace? Starting with, I mean, the first thing, I don't, I don't begrudge anybody a 5% raise and we would love to be able to get to the same position. It would cost us, I think I figured out about two and a half million dollars for us to be able to do that. But the, the particular thing that I'm looking at is the notion that you're adding these 18 new positions. Granted, a few of them are adding back positions that were cut last year. But let's say you're adding 12 new positions and plus a number of other increases in the amount of time that you're intending to compensate people for. And I looked at the, the cost to you all of those, of those upgrades in your, in your staffing. And it comes out pretty darn close to the amount it would cost us. I mean, almost within a hundred thousand dollars, the amount it would cost us to give our people the same raise you all are giving your people. And so that's, that's where I'm, I'm, I'm struggling here. And I don't know how to be fair to you all and fair to the rest of the city employees as well.
Mr. Snook, I hear you. I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody on our side, I don't think it's 18 or 19 new FTEs. And, and first off, I, I would hope, and I would ask that, you know, when you're, when you're looking at this, that it's not, it's not an us against you. And, and I feel like that, that you're coming from that position. And I feel like, you know, you represent our entire community and our students and our teachers, you know, are part of this community. So I, I think, and I would hope that we can get beyond that. You know, mostly that. I mean, that, that bothers me, it doesn't sit well because I feel like there is value in every single, every single student. You're, you're, I believe your son or your, your children went through these, you know, the city schools.
All three of them, yep.
Yeah, so I, I don't understand how, how it's an us against you. And, and we need your help and, and we appreciate your help, you know, as a city council in, in every level of funding. But again, the positions and that, that we are trying to implement as Dr. Atkins said, you know, came from staff, but are really geared towards support and equity for, for every single student that comes, that comes through our buildings. And, and, you know, we're asking for level funding. You know, our raises, our raise that we're, we've approved is coming from our CARES funding. And it feels like if you're going to cut or, or provide less than level funding to us, I mean, you're taking away from us. And it just doesn't feel right. I don't have an answer either, but that doesn't seem right.
Well, obviously, I mean, just by your own language in the last, in your last sentence, you recognize that as some inherent us versus, versus you kind of approach to it. I will tell you, in talking to city employees who are not school employees, they feel an us versus you in a sense that they're saying, why does the school, why do school employees get to talk about a 5% raise and, and we don't? And so our, our task, and I also had what, what you call level funding, we're actually, I mean, I, I don't know what the numbers are going to look like with, with the most recent news today. But as of yesterday, we were looking at cutting our budget in absolute terms. So it's, I'm not trying to put it out there as an us versus you situation, except to the extent that anytime somebody is asking one party for money that, you know, that you want us to have, there has to be some, some sense of a recognition that there could be different, different interests at stake. We all have great interest in making sure that the school system is the best school system it can be for the money that we can afford to spend. And that's the, that's the catch is for the money we can afford to spend. Anyway, I, I, I'm not trying to make it an adversarial situation, except to say that I think that, that when we set up a situation where one group of city employees gets a 5% raise and another group of city employees doesn't, there is some tension there.
Can I just mention that, you know, the, the 5% is something that was really put forward by the governor. It is, it wasn't where we started. It's not what we came to you with, but the governor, you know, is, is putting this forward as, as a, as a way of recognizing sort of what has happened, you know, with our education system during COVID. And, you know, and what happened last year and the fact that, you know, there were no raises last year either. And the state is putting money behind that. So it's not something, it's not where we started, but it seems like, you know, why would we, why would we then say, no, we don't want this to, to this governor when they're actually putting money forward to enable us to do this and enable, you know, the teachers to, or the staff to really catch up from the losses that, that were incurred by them last year. So, you know, I think that's one thing. And I guess another thing that I would say is that the impact on our, our school division, on our kids is huge. We don't know, we don't even know yet, where these kids are just barely coming back now. We don't exactly know what that's going to be, but I think it's going to be really significant in terms of both academic losses, the, the, you know, I think we know that there are going to be increased inequities in terms of the impact on different cohorts, cohorts of our student community. And I will say this, as, you know, I think we, we have a mental health crisis amongst our kids. It is here now, we have it. Now, how long does it take to fix that? You know, I don't think anybody's going to really know that, but we can't ignore that because it impacts everything else. And so those are some of the things that we're, we're facing now. It's not, you know, there, there's been a lot of damage done, not, you know, our fault, but, but it's the pandemic. And, you know, what we're trying to do is, you know, to, to, you know, keep our kids from completely falling off the, of the planet in terms of what they've lost and in terms of, you know, their own emotional and mental well-being. And in terms of the equity, we, we committed ourselves to looking at, at our division through a lens of equity. We can't stop doing that now. And so it requires resources to do that. And maybe more resources going towards some kids than others. So those are some of the things, you know, that the ways that we're looking at this, we're not trying to be unfair, we're not trying to say our employees are better than other city employees. That's not it at all.
I could not agree more. I'm a parent of three kids under the age of 11. I see what's going on in the virtual classrooms and now in the real classrooms. I do believe the need is greater now. I am not disputing that. Where I struggle with is that the governor, as you, there was this, you know, request for this 5% increase. But the slide that you showed earlier reflected that we, there only results in a 300 and some thousand dollar benefit from the state and the rest is having to come from the locality. So I think it's great to ask for that, but it's a reality that we have to figure out a way to pay for it after this year because the CARES funds are not going to be there. And so, again, I just want to just reiterate that that's, that's just the, the reality that we're in. And again, I am not denying that the needs are at their peak. And that's one of the other reasons I was asking to understand, is there some, some needs that we see that over the course of 18 months, 24 months are going to maybe trickle? You know, there's going to be some adjustments that can be made because it's not as acute as it is right this moment and what I anticipate the full next school year is going to look like. That can allow us to kind of smooth this both operationally as well as balancing that with the funding that we're going to have available. And also a commitment that if additional dollars come from the federal government, which we are hopefully assured are, that some will be set aside as a reserve to help us smooth over the next few years because the city has so many unknowns. So that's really what I'm asking for.
I was in a meeting yesterday, actually, that where the American Rescue Act was being discussed with Congressman Bobby Scott and his legislative aides. At this point, my understanding is that the distributions were going to be based on the Title I formulas, just so you know. And that it was intentionally that it would have a couple of years to spend through the end of FY 23, with being that the idea specifically so that it could purchase the end of FY 23, specifically so that people could get hired for year-long contracts to help smooth, to help fill in the educational needs to help kids catch up from this pandemic. With that case being, it's some of the, it sounds like some of the positions that are looking to be funded are potentially going towards that way already. If that is the thought process, what if we are committing to utilizing when we find out what those funds are, to pay for some of those positions out of that money so that the city can then pull back some of its funding to hold in reserve to smooth out the transition down the road?
If, if I could add to that, you know, I certainly don't see it as us versus them. I think it's just like everything else, this budget cycle is just the mantra I see over and over again is just there, there are no solutions, only trade-offs. You know, we, we don't have the resources to meet every need and it's just figuring out what the trade-offs are. But to Vice Mayor McGill's point, I know the money for K-12 and the new bill is 60 billion more than both the previous CARES Act bills combined. And as Vice Mayor McGill mentioned, it'll be the Title I formula. I don't know if that's what was used in the previous CARES Act bills or not, or how that impacts the money. But it would seem safe to assume we're probably going to get at a minimum, a similar amount of money as from the two previous CARES Act combined. So in some ways, I almost wonder if our conversation right now is almost a moot point, given, you know, the additional support that may be coming there. And it's probably impossible to, to know at this point, but does this, do you all have any sense of how, how you would look at prioritizing that money? Because certainly now that we know it's available, it wouldn't seem to me to make a whole lot of sense to reduce expenditures if we can cover it with theirs. It's just how we're going to mix it around to, to better smooth it out and, and make sure we have the best use of it. So I don't, I don't know if that was clear. But do, do you all have any sense of when that new money becomes available, how it might impact like the things we've been discussing just now?
Mr. Payne, what I would be recommending to our school board is that we look carefully at the, the additional CARES dollars, the American relief dollars and the spend down of those dollars. And then allocate that, those funds over those fiscal years in order to reduce the requests that we would have of city council, the funding requests that we would have of city council in those spend down years. And to gradually ask city council to help us to wind out of the use of those one-time funds. So they would be used as, I think this, this Hill made the recommendation or, or observation that having that runway is going to be critical to us as we come back in subsequent years to have funding requests before city council. So it certainly will be providing that landing for us coming out of using the $4 million now in CARES dollars. So we would be very thoughtful and very judicious in using that as a runway.
Right. And go ahead.
Well, I'm just asking if that's the case, would that then mean that this would be presented differently?
No, it would actually be presented just as it is. That was always our intent. The budget that we developed had those two considerations. And the intent is that we would use additional CARES dollars if they became available or any carry-forward dollars to reduce our request.
Well, no, so even if it's a Well, no, so even if it's, you know, the, if it's something that city staff has to consider as the base moving into a two, three, four year, five year period, I think the reservation that you're hearing may still be the same without, because at some point, the government funding will stop and it will turn to the locality having to fund, you know, pick up what has been, you know, funded in the past. So I I don't see how, I mean, we have a couple things going on with the city that gives me the same, you know, pause where we are using this one time funding to increase our fire staff. At some point, the city is going to have to pick that up. All of those things have to be considered. And if those things start happening at the same time. So that was my question as you were talking, just is even if this then moves to three years out, I think even having the conversation around that these things will be evaluated in the meantime to see if they're still needed would probably help with the concerns that that council and staff are having. I think that whole new baseline making knowing that that's where it's going to come is where what's causing the reservation.
Mayor Walker, I certainly can understand that that the reservation. I can give the example. Councilman Payne suggested that we may, and hypothetically, we got five million dollars in the recovery dollars. If we use two million or three million of those in FY twenty three, that would reduce our request to city council debt by that three million dollars. So the baseline would not be the total four million in FY twenty three. The baseline would be an additional one million. And then for FY twenty four, remaining dollars would be used to again reduce what would be considered the baseline. And and we would be one million dollars out of the use of one time dollars FY twenty four potentially, and these are hypothetical because we don't, I don't know what's in the future. If we use another two million dollars of the recovery dollars, then the baseline that requests for city council would be two million dollars, bringing us three million dollars out of the use of one time CARES dollars. And we would continue that as far out as the additional dollars would allow us to do that.
And I would, I would say from my perspective, the ability of those additional stimulus dollars, you know, making that ramp multiple years makes me much more comfortable because I think the our biggest challenge is if it's a cliff we hit in one or two budget cycles. You know, maybe there's not a full recovery yet, but if we extend it over that timeframe, I'm just a lot more comfortable that the economic recovery and the growth that we'll see will make it much more easy to cover it. And I also, I think, I think we just have to bake in that, as was mentioned earlier, you know, some of the impacts from the pandemic on students, there's no way to avoid that it's going to require investments and it's going to have impacts on students' entire educational career, you know, from everything that's happened this past year. And that there's no way of avoiding some of increased investments that we're going to need. And then two, two final questions is, one, I know there's so much uncertainty, it may be hard to say. But do you see it as potentially being feasible at all, depending on how much money comes from this new stimulus bill to say council reduces some of its contribution to schools from our general fund, but it's covered with that stimulus money. So in effect, your total budget is the same. You're just using this new stimulus money versus city money that comes with the trade off of having less money for that like ramp over time. But it would free up more immediate money for us, this immediate budget cycle, if there's opportunities there. And then two, I just, I think I might have misunderstood, is is the governor's request for the five percent raise something that the school district has to do? It's just covered by local dollars or was it just a recommendation?
And just before the CCS answer that, I I just want to make sure that I'm clear when you all respond. Because I feel like that would make us then have to get back to that baseline and then add whatever increase. So I don't know how that would be helpful, a long term projection.
I would, I would just say there's a potential for it to be helpful if, and I'm not saying it would be a huge amount of money, but if it's like even a couple hundred thousand dollars and it's covered by that CARES Act money, we can meet an immediate budget need that we can't cover now. And if economic growth rebounds over the next couple of budget cycles, it will be covered. If that makes sense.
But you all should be getting some more funding as well, correct?
Correct. Ten million direct, five million to CAT, and then potentially indirect money as well. So it may, it may not be necessary. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I would be, I would just ask us to really think about that because then we are asking for the CARES funding to do two things. You know, I understand what you are saying, that just without knowing what the future looks like, what building out of this really looks like. I mean, you get all of our students back into the school system and then problems that are not even planned for may present. You know, I, I, I don't know. I get what you're saying, but I just feel like that may be, but I'll let them answer. I'm just.
One thing, one other comment that I'd like to make, and I want to say I really appreciate the difficult position that you guys are in, that the city is in right now. And, you know, I, you know, and I want us to all work together. We're all really on the same team with this. And we were talking about some of these very acute issues and then talking about, you know, ramps and how we go forward. And I would just like to remind us all that you know, in the long term or medium term, we're dealing with an inadequate funding formula. As, you know, suggested back in that Blue Ribbon Commission. So I think the city is going to need to really take a hard look at this. And it's been hard to do in the past, you know, few years because there's been a lot of change. But I think with Mr. Boyle's here, and I hope, you know, you're listening very carefully. That's something that that I think the city really needs to look at, that rather than talking about how the schools are trying to add this and add that, the funding formula itself is a problem and needs to be addressed moving forward. And after, after we have some kind of a ramp out of our current situation. So I hope that'll be part of everybody's thinking about this.
And I would like to add to what Dr. Kraft has said. This is a difficult position for everybody, and I don't think anyone takes it lightly. I think everyone is trying or attempting to do the best that they can do. I think we are all very aware that there are many people around us that did not receive raises. They are not a part of city government or a part of the CCS government. And that is very difficult as well. And some of the people that did not receive raises are members of our community that are still having to do certain things, who may also be parents of the children in our community. Dr. Atkins and her team have always been, during my duration on the school board, thoughtful in their manner. And what is best for the people in the CCS community to include the students and the staff. And when I'm talking about staff, I'm talking about everyone, our custodians, our cafeteria workers, our instructors, our part time people, or anyone that falls in there. And when we realized that we had CARES money that we could use for one time, our board had a very serious discussion about what to do. What do we do with the money in order to maintain equity? Equity does not always mean inclusion, ladies and gentlemen. But the CCS community is working to have inclusion. And often when you're including, there is a cost. But we hope that the cost is not to the detriment of our students. Any monies that we receive going forward will be reviewed by Dr. Atkins and her team. And she will then discuss it with the members of the board so that we can see how best to go forward. We will not spend every dime that we get. We will portion it out and use it to help us over the next several years, which will ultimately help city council over the next several years. And I think that we have always worked as a team. I think there may have been differences and there may still be differences. But I don't think that there's anyone that is in attendance that doesn't want the best for the students. And I'm not discounting the adults in the CCS family. But the students are the people that are going to go out and do what all of us do around this table. And we have to ensure that they are healthy. And that health comes in many forms. It's physical, it's psychological, it's emotional, it's academic. There are a lot of things that go into making up students. I don't know how many of you have been out and about since Monday. But there's a different energy with the young people. It's hard. But we're doing the best we can and we feel that you are doing the best that you can. And we understand all of the stresses and pulls you have because you have more than one entity looking to you to say, help. You're the parents and the police and fire and schools and social services and everyone else that you give money to are your children. And you're trying to do the best by your children that you can. And we're asking you to help us to the best of your ability and also understand that we will do the same. And that's critical. And asking for the same money that we currently have, which will be done in June, is level funding. And we've tried to use our CARES dollars with that in mind. We can't spend something that we don't have. We are anticipating a signature tomorrow. We are anticipating money to be transferred, but we've got to wait until it comes. Because there's a lot that can happen between a signature and a formula and money in the bank. And we are aware of that and we are mindful of that. And we are going to be good stewards of your money. And I'm not talking about any federal money that we get or any state money that we get, but I am talking about city dollars. We have always been mindful of those funds. And if you remember the presentation that was made a few short days ago, the Charlottesville City School Division did not come in fifth or seventh or eighth in the various places that we ranked because we misappropriated funds. We use the meager funds in order to do the best by your children and their families in order to help them to continue to achieve. And I do appreciate, as does everyone else on the school board side, your willingness to hear us, your willingness to ask questions and your willingness to allow us to answer those questions. And we also hope that if you have further questions that you will ask in order to give us an opportunity to answer them. But please know that any additional monies coming forward will be spent in a thoughtful and mindful manner to not only assist the CCS family, but to assist the Charlottesville community as a whole.
Thank you, Ms. Perrier. I also, I guess we need to answer those questions. Does somebody need to answer those questions? But I did want to quickly, I wanted to acknowledge that Mr. Johnson, our student school board rep, also has been here through this conversation. So I wanted to thank him for for being here.
Mr. Payne, I believe you presented some questions. Did we ask any of those questions that you asked? Did we give you enough information? And we'll be glad to get those that we didn't answer for you.
No, I think so. I mean, definitely, definitely understand that, you know, the five percent raise just being not technically a mandate from the government, but a recommendation and obviously something, you know, I think we all want to to get to and is needed for, you know, teachers in this environment. To the first question, I mean, I I think maybe it's just unknowable. It's just about, you know, as was said, you know, the legislation signed, but we don't know the amount of money. And just depending on what that new amount of money is, how feasible it may be to again, just put less of it on the ramp over time to help more immediately this budget cycle in a way that is not a cut in any way. It's just reallocating the timeframe of when that money's spent, if that makes sense. Just to figure out the 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 most effective way that we can, you know, use that money to meet all our priorities. But I think mostly answered, I I just, I know the first one is just sort of an unknowable because we don't know the dollar amount that will be coming.
But I will say, Councilman Payne, if that, when the funds are allocated and we know those are certainly using that to respond to immediate needs, be it for the city or city council, would certainly be something that we could discuss. And I know I could make some recommendations to the board and the board would discuss.
I'm just wondering if there's a possibility, if there are signatures this week and that we understand, is there a possibility that we would understand by next, our next, well, we have two budget meetings next week, but maybe the meeting on the seventeenth? Or do you think that would be too soon for that information?
Renee Hoover has been following that piece of legislation. Renee, do you recall the timeline from the signature to the actual notification with the CARES two dollars?
I I haven't read anything or seen anything. It's been more focused on passing through Congress and the president's signature. Beyond that, I don't know what the release is to the states and when the allocation will be made.
Mayor Walker, I do know that our State Department of Education will give us a notification that it's on the way. When they get notification that it's coming, they typically will let us know and give us a projected amount of it. So as soon as we get that information, we will let you know. I'll let the board know and they will let you know.
And just, it may be helpful if, once you all have that information, instead of us trying to do this over email, especially with the conversation on about if the ramp ramping up changes, that it may be helpful for you all to join us again at one of those other meetings. So and those dates are the fifteenth, seventeenth and twenty fifth right now. So it's just may just put those dates out there in case, you know, for you all to consider if that works for you. That may be helpful.
Thank you.
It's just final thought is, I think, you know, particularly in light of this new legislation, it seems to me that it would seem to be very feasible to provide, you know, sufficient money from the city for five percent raises in these requests. And the budget situation is a lot less difficult than it was even a day ago. And so, especially once we just get more specificity on the numbers, I it it just seems like we should very well be able to achieve it with that influx of money and clearly putting, you know, schools and teachers as one of our top priority. And clearly putting, you know, schools and teachers as one of our top priorities in pandemic recovery.
The only other thing that I wanted to add, by the way, in response to something, I don't remember who it was, was it Dr. Atkins? Or, I'm not sure who it was. I'm getting my figures about your FTE additions from your January 16th document. And your presentation, page 20, I count up 19.5 additional FTEs. So that's, that's where I got it from. And the question that I've got philosophically again is, you've indicated, I don't remember who it was again, who said that the push to getting to hiring additional social worker, to hiring social workers, was something that you had been hoping to work toward for a while. And I just question at a time when, when, you know, we're, we're going to have to be budgeting both, both the city as a whole and the schools as, as an entity are going to be budgeting and balancing budgets with one-time funds, whether this is a great time for anybody to be making a longer-term commitment based on, on one-time funds. So that, you know, you, you look at the 19.5 FTEs and some of those seem like they might have some relevance to COVID. Most of them don't. I understand that you're likely to have not as many students this year as you did, say, two years ago, or next year as you did two years ago. And it's just the questions that people keep asking me that I, all I can say is heck if I know, is why do they need more, more teachers for fewer students? And that, there may well be a perfectly legitimate explanation. But understand that that's, that's the kind of issue that the people who are writing the checks for paying the taxes are asking. And it's, it's really not my favorite position to be in as a city councillor to say, I don't know why they say that. Go ask them.
Mr. Snook, if I may, when you're looking at our budget changes sheet, if you follow along to near the end, it shows where we do adjust our staff based on enrollment. There are enrollment-based reductions to positions, and that's a routine part of our budget process. So I just wanted to share that with you in response to that concern.
Which document are you looking at? Five of them from you.
Sure. So if you're looking at the presentation, let's see, make sure. Yep, from the council meeting, go to the slide after the one where you counted up the FTEs. You'll see a reduction of $372,874 for five classroom. Yeah, I just wanted you to be aware, we do go through that process.
Okay, so a net of 13.5 or 14.5?
Yes, you could go forward with that netting, yes.
Okay. Anyway, so that's, that's the, the political problem. And I don't mean that in an electoral sense, but just in terms of how we interact with, with the people who, you know, write everybody's paychecks is to, is to try to figure out how to explain why in this very difficult time the schools are looking to add net 14.5 full-time equivalent positions. If some of them are directly responsive to needs brought on by COVID, that's perfectly explainable. That's also likely to be a one-time kind of expense and justifiable on that basis. Anyway, this is.
I think, I disagree that anything that we're just gonna have like a one-time COVID trauma year. I think this is going to be an ongoing experience. One of the things that I, you know, Dr. Atkins and I had discussed was about, like the IAs specifically. We have been trying to get that back in the budget since 2009. And I just feel very strongly that the more adults in the building to support the educational needs of our students, which also includes their social and emotional needs, I think is going to be critical next year, but also an ongoing experience. These are children who have been in their house for 10 months. Much longer for some other students come August and September. And I just want to, I think it's a very narrow way to look at the CARES and rescue money is to think, oh, well, it's just one year. No, we have an ongoing mental health crisis. And in order to properly educate our students, we are going to need to provide mental health supports.
Jennifer, you just went away.
Lost your audio.
Can't hear you.
Not done before, but that we have been hearing for. We lost you for a second, Jennifer.
Okay, I saw people waving and I was like, ah! So anyway, I just, I'm gonna.
Jennifer, why don't you turn off your video and just keep your audio on and you should not freeze.
That always happens in this house. I'm so sorry. Anyway, my point is that we are, we're on the cutting edge of a lot of, of trying to meet a lot of unique needs in the next decade. There is no doubt. And I think we're going to need to think long-term and broadly about that. And our community has been asking for us to focus on the mental health of our students. And that is what this budget is. And it's, it's really important that we commit to that. We cannot take away, we should be adding supports to our, for our students in the coming years.
And Lord, I'd like to concur with, with Jennifer and Dr. Craft and everyone who's spoken up to this point. As a former educator, I saw it up close and personal before I retired. And this is not something that's going to be temporary in terms of mental health challenges, challenges of our students. This is going to be long-term. We have lost a lot of ground due to COVID. So with, we've got to continue to have sufficient funding of the schools in order to meet the needs of our children. They have so many unique challenges. And this is not something that's going to go away in a few months. It's going to be long-term. It involves equity, it involves closing, beginning to close that achievement gap. It's going to involve a lot, not only the children, the parents, the teachers, the staff members. And I agree with you, they've been locked down for 10 months. So we have a lot, we're going to have a lot of challenges with our students. Those social workers are going to be up and running along with the school councillors. So it's not like, you know, we're going to have less students and asking for more funding. We are going to have to have level funding to meet the challenges that are going to be ahead of us in the next, not just five years, could be 10 years down the road. And I saw it up close and personal, and I know what those challenges could be. Excuse me?
I'd like to give you a couple of examples of something I've heard today from students. The governor visited the school division and we were at, at one of the schools this morning. And he read, he had two books, the teacher, he went to a classroom and the teacher asked him which of two books he wanted to read. And he said, well, let's give the students the opportunity to select which book. And one book was about families and another book was about COVID. And so she asked the students to, and the book about COVID was written by two physicians at UVA. And this was a third grade classroom. And she asked the students, for the governor, which book would you like the governor to read? Stand up if you want the governor to read the book on COVID and stay sitting if you want the other book. So when she asked that question, over two-thirds of the classroom stood up to hear about COVID. That tells you how much COVID is at the forefront of the thinking of our students and how much it has impacted them over these last months. And then he talked about heroes because COVID, the story had something about heroes in it. And he asked the students, who are your heroes? And is some of them named, you know, the, the, the suspects that we would have with heroes? Several of them said, my teacher. My teacher is my hero. Now, when we are paying our teachers in Virginia, we're in the bottom 10, the bottom 10 in the nation in our salaries. Adding a 5% increase, and we didn't give them a salary increase last year, giving them a 5% increase is but a small step forward to help solidify those heroes that are in the lives of our young people in those classrooms. And especially after what they have been through.
I just wanted to, part of, I think, what we have to do also as a community, and I was attempting to get our staff to work on some kind of mental health campaign during the pandemic. But part of that is how the information is also presented to kids. And we've talked about this before in terms of their ability to learn, their ability to get through very difficult times will also present itself in this, you know, the same way. And so that's one thing I'm hoping that we do better as, you know, as a community. I had a conference call very early on with my entire family, anybody who would join just, you know, about a year ago about what this time could potentially look like and how they get through it. The, some of the same students that you're talking about as city students, they are handling this pandemic, I think, better because we had those very early on conversations with them about what this time could look like and what that would mean, but how getting through it would enhance the future. So that's one thing I wanted to say that I think we all have to do better about. And then the second thing is, this is likely to now also be the last stimulus from the government also. So I think even processing how we spend future stimulus is the same conversation that we're attempting to have now, you know, about the ramp up. And so we keep talking about those as one-time things. But now it's already three times and the government knows how vast that need is too. And based on the current federal administration and hopefully if things keep working at a congressional level and we know some of those elections are coming up shortly, that we can continue to plan to be able to meet those needs that, you know, that we know that some people have. So that, that's one way of also, like, just reframing this time in our history.
You know, definitely just echo the points about, from my perspective as a councillor, you know, I just, I, I think we have to just bake in, there's more permanent needs for support for mental health for students and the impacts of COVID. I mean, even, you know, data is fuzzy, but I think the last, like, data I'd seen nationally was like a little under 50% of students reporting depression and anxiety disorders. 25% quarter students reporting substance abuse. Around a quarter students reporting at least having some suicidal ideation. So it's, I don't think we're going to fully know the impacts on mental health and economically for years. And we're just going to need to bake in permanently that we're going to need to change how we operate and provide those supports. And again, I think in a lot of ways, this new stimulus makes some of the conflict earlier a moot point. I mean, I just see it as, as very feasible now to be able to get there with much less of a worry about, you know, any kind of cliff immediately over the next one or two budget cycles.
Thank you all for coming in short, short notice.
Thank you for the opportunity and the invitation, and I'm glad we could all have these discussions. I mean, I think they're very important and we are always here to receive questions and to do our best to answer them. So thank you. I know we've run, we've run over, so.
Right? Well, thank you all. And yeah, we'll, so unless there's any further comments, then we'll move on to the next part of the agenda, which is going to be equally as.
Well, good luck, Mayor Walker. And thank you as always for your thoughtful manner and guiding us forward. I, as a resident of the city, I appreciate it and have a great evening. Everyone, please remain safe.
Thank you. Do you all have to adjourn? Okay.
Do we?
Yes, Ms. Perez, would you please adjourn?
I do adjourn the meeting for Charlottesville City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, City Council.
Have a good evening. All right, so Mr. Boils, I'll turn it back over to you and the budget team.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll just walk you through a few slides to begin the discussions on the, the community fund. And I'm not sure if Ryan or Kaki will, will kick this off, but I know that one of those two will begin the discussion.
I'm gonna go ahead and kick this off as we talk about the contractual agencies. As we start to get through our outside nonprofit agencies, we're going to discuss the contractual agencies first and then follow that up with our vibrant community fund agencies. First slide shows the contractual agencies for public safety, transportation, education and the arts. Many of the funding levels for these agencies within the next few slides are set by formulas, MOUs or other agreements with, between the agencies in these cities. So as such, we're not planning to go through each and every agency and detail each and every change. But if you have any specific questions related to any of the agencies you see on the slides as we go through them, please ask and we have, we should, if we don't know the answers, we'll be able to get those for you before our next meeting. But as you can see, this first one, as I said, is public safety, transportation and some education in arts. And, you know, the larger changes are for the ECC jails and jaunt. So if there's any questions about these agencies, we're happy to answer them. If not, we can.
This is like.
Oh, go ahead, Heather.
I'm just more understand, want to understand, like, what qualifies someone to fall into this category versus the competitive process category? Because I know that's going to be a point of discussion probably at some point. I'm just kind of curious of what that, what, what kind of marks that distinction?
So typically, I will speak to how it was initially envisioned in the past. The, as I said, many of these agencies, we have MOUs with them. We have other agreements. It would be contractual, it's considered, this is, if they did not provide this service for the city, the city would have to staff and provide the service as well. In the case of the SPCA, we, I know this has come up in past discussions where if we didn't contribute to the SPCA as the regional pound, we would then have to build and create our own. So there's, those distinctions are, are how we typically do it. Many of these are regional collaborations with regional partners. Many of the, you know, as we go through these, most of these contractual agencies, I can't say a blanket statement, but they are, the vibrant community fund agencies are related more towards the human service side of things. Whereas the contractual agencies, as you can see, are very specific to services that are being provided. Don't know if that provides some clarity.
No, thank you, Ryan. Thank you. There's just some that maybe we should, I think we'll talk about later, maybe consider whether they should fall into this category.
Mayor Walker, I believe you had a question as well?
I have a question. So there was an article today about Jaunt that mentioned that they had a $1.2 million surplus and an additional two. They were in an operating profit of $200,000. Are those things considered in these requests? Is that a part of the discussion with their request for funding or? That's my question.
Basically, I'm sorry, Ryan.
No, as I say, I may turn that over to Chrissy because you do more of the review of these agencies.
I would say basically for this request, those two items were not, their decrease here is largely due to CARES funding and the use of CARES funding and also the reduced number of routes. And so because of COVID, and that equates for the reduction. Most of these requests were in before their year-end was finalized as well.
I'm just interested in how those numbers factor in with organizations when they, because if they're saying they have a surplus of that. I'm just interested in how those numbers factor in with organizations when they, because if they're saying they have a surplus of that amount, then that should reduce the contributions that the locality pays in to.
So many of these have agreements that limit their fund balance or surpluses that they're able to maintain. For example, the library has one and others. In terms of Jaunt, we can check on that for you. I'm not sure specifically, in most cases, I would say that, you know, a surplus is a rarity. And so this is probably an anomaly, but the specifics I'm not sure of, and we can certainly find that out. But in general, you know, they present their finances and their budgeting needs. And the surplus is not something that's usually an issue.
And then the other question from this page, I just want to point it out while we have this discussion is that last year I brought up with the Budget Office and then spoke with one of the supervisors about the Defender's Office, the Public Defender's Office. And if we're talking about equity and the, throughout the criminal justice system and that other organizations should get funding and shouldn't have to participate in the vibrant community process. This is definitely, even before you get to a drug court program or a mental health doctor, having adequate defense is more important because maybe you never end up with needing those services in the first place. If your defense, you know, is present and attuned and adequately provides, you know, the, what they call indigent defense. So and at this rate, it's hard for them to provide funding for their office. And I'm sure this will come up after the group that I'm a part of or that the working group that I that, you know, whatever I have together, whatever we, we're, you know, council was aware that that group was, you know, meeting and we talked about it at council meetings. But that's just something to keep in, in mind too, that that is probably one of the most important aspects of diverting people from the need for those other services.
There any other questions on this set of agencies? Okay, next slide, please, Brian. Here are the contractual agencies for the organizational memberships workforce, youth and family type of agencies. As you'd see, there's not many changes on this slide, but if there's any questions about any of these.
I have a question. The Blue, the Health Department, Blue Ridge Health Department, I think that's the first time I've stated. So in the vibrant communities document, it wasn't clear on whether the dental clinic from the free clinic, if the money was transferred, that I guess had been going to the Health Department and then used to subsidize them. If I'm even understanding that correctly was, did that happen or did the Health Department keep those funds?
I'll have to rely on this gimmick to answer that one.
I wish I could answer that. I will write it down and make sure we get an answer to you and maybe somebody who knows is listening and will text me or email me the answer. But I, I, I don't know the answer until I talk to somebody from one of those two agencies.
Okay. And then my other question, this slide, so region 10, very early on in the pandemic, they were furloughing or laying off employees. And I know that we don't have a say into what happens, $2 once they get. But if there's any way that, you know, we can tie any of this funding to ensuring that people are, you know, not kind of tossed out doing, you know, pandemic and the hardest time that any of, you know, most of us have experienced, that would be helpful. And I think what I'm really asking is the reserves, like that we maintain reserves are our non-contractual agencies. Do they have to maintain those reserves and how do they show us whether they have, have they maintained them? My next question on this slide was the United Way Childcare Scholarships and just wanted to make sure that we, because we talked about last year, making sure that there weren't multiple agencies applying for funding to provide scholarships. And just where did that discussion, where did that discussion go?
Again, I'm have to defer to Kaki as she's the more of an expert on this area than I am.
I'm afraid I'm actually not an expert in the childcare arena. I know Sue Moffett is listening, so I'm hopeful that she may text me or shoot me an email or weigh in if she knows what's happening with this childcare scholarships with United Way.
Which is easier, me to talk or?
Yes.
Okay. So I think the question, Mayor Walker, was what's happening with the, with the idea that there were multiple agencies creating childcare scholarships? Did I understand that correctly?
Um, yes.
Okay, so I, I don't know either, but I'd be happy to check on that. And, and I was not part of those original discussions, but I'll be happy to get caught up and, and send a response through Kaki.
All right. Are there any other questions on this particular slide? Not let's go ahead and move to the final slide of the contractual. These are just a few more of our workforce and organizational memberships. Again, very little change on, on this slide from year to year.
And I just want to add just one note, it is, there is the potential, there may be a few budget adjustments coming on some of these. As many of these organizations have boards that won't be adopting their budgets until a little bit later. So they are subject to change and I know a couple are in the works. So you may be seeing some adjustments. I don't think anything that's material, but just want to put that out there.
And just one more comment to that, well, a comment to that. It may be helpful if we feel like early on before boards adopt their budgets, that if we are not going to be able to give city employees increase in pay that we also talk about, you know, send maybe a message out if that's legal to say that, you know, increases in, you know, COLA or pay raises cannot be, you know, will not be accepted or reviewed this year. I just, it's, if there's a way to create that consistency across the board, we had it come up in the jail board meeting this morning. And I just think if that is presented, it just, and there's a decrease here for the jail this year. But it just, it's, it's still, you know, a part of the conversations that those boards are having, especially when it's out, you know, because it's these outside agencies. So that just is something that.
And we do try to communicate that when we can, especially on the ones where we have the option to have an impact with that decision. And, and it's a great point.
If I may interrupt, the, the magic of having so many people listen who know things that one of your questions from a previous slide was answered. The dental clinic moved 100% from the Health District to the, to the Free Clinic a couple of years ago. It's unclear whether that's as many as eight or 10. So it's been 100% in the Free Clinic for some time.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I'm going to get back to it, see if I have a follow-up question, but let me go look at my notes.
Okay, well, as Mayor Walker's looking for that, is there any other questions on this particular group or any of the others that we've just gone through that others may have thought of?
No, so I got it. It was saying at the Free Clinic, assume management of the dental clinic. And so they were just basically saying that the funding requests for this year, and I don't know whether it's just the free dental clinic and the integrated medical clinic pharmacy, but they were saying because of that transfer that this funding is, you know, the funding is essential and one was rated a 2B. So I guess then my question is, when they were under the Health Department, was that guaranteed funding through contractual agencies? Or did they receive vibrant community process?
No, I think actually I'm remembering now that the reference there was when they were actually in a building at the health clinic. So they, the Free Clinic was co-located with the Health District for a number of years. And so in the last year, the Health District has necessarily had to expand its programming and needed all that space. And so the Free Clinic was then in a position to have to find essentially fair market space. And I think that's the reference. And so, no, the money was no, we treated them just like any other nonprofit when they were getting the free space at the, at the Health District, there was no change in our characterization of the Free Clinic when they were there or when they were cut loose and on their own to find space.
Okay.
Okay, um, now we're going to go, I'm going to turn this over to, to Kaki to kind of go through some of the process, vibrant community process information.
So it hasn't been that many months since you all were talking about the vibrant community fund process for the last budget year. And that will likely be true as we continue to think about fiscal year 23 already. But just a reminder about some process, significant changes have been made to the way that the vibrant community fund process has unfurled and most recently spurred by a group that the mayor convened in 2018. Some of those changes included a new name, the adoption of five broad priority areas to focus decision-making, creation of some funding opportunities to improve their capacity. And so one of the things that had come up in that small group was how difficult it was for newer organizations or newer programs to sort of break into the city funding. And so this was designed to help those agencies develop some of their capacity to do that. Alamo County, which had been a partner in our funding process, established an independent process for funding local nonprofits, which they continue to call the ABRT, which is the formal, the former name for this process. And the creations of a work group to consider additional changes. We sought additional feedback from council last August before this process got formally unveiled to the, to the nonprofit community, including adding equity as a priority area, whether you all wanted to rank the actual priorities, not just have priorities, but actually have ranked ones. Support for arts and culture programming, funding philosophy, and then responding to emerging community needs. Next slide, Brian. So the impact of the pandemic has been significant on the nonprofit community and on the vibrant community fund process. It's no surprise, seems to be something we're talking about a lot today. Planned community meetings around improving the process for arts and culture did not occur. The work group was interrupted by the pandemic and resumed meeting in October, but then lost the staff person in that process as well. Many agencies pivoted services to focus on emergency need rather than previous goals. And many agencies moved to virtual services, resulting in fewer people served. But that's not exclusive. There are some agencies who are actually serve lots more people because of their pivot. And so it, it's not that all nonprofits serve fewer, but some did. And that the community need for financial assistance, food, health, mental health services really sharply increased. And that's the, both the intensity and acuity of the need has been really sharply felt by all agencies, regardless of how you started your relationship with your, the person who's receiving services, you have had to find a way to be sort of providing wraparound services in a way that you weren't necessarily before. I, I think this will come up again later, but this shift in the sort of sense of emergency need in our community certainly impacted the decision-making process for this cycle as well. All of, all of the folks who on the review team and on staff who were making decisions and thinking about this process had the pandemic as a backdrop in our decision-making and thinking about the incredible level of need in our community. Next slide. Thank you, Brian. So for this cycle, the process changes that were implemented were that there were six fraud funding areas. So the five that you all decided, the council decided earlier, education, youth, jobs and wages, community, public safety, affordable housing, health, and then equity was added based on fairly robust conversations during the fiscal year 21 vibrant community fund process. There were two ways that nonprofits could seek city support. One was for general operating and then the other was for funding under $10,000 for capacity building. Applications were again, just like last year, ranked by both the quality of the application. So exemplary, solid, fair or poor, based on best practices identified for nonprofit programming and operation. And then also on importance and addressing the priority area identified by council. So those ranks were essential, important, helpful, no direction, no direct connection. And then the, as you'll remember, the grids marry those two scores together into quadrants. We provided a new method for arts and culture applications, a streamlined process that we actually borrowed with permission from Alamo County, who had done the same before this, this cycle. Application and evaluation improvements included a review team with experience as consumers of nonprofit services, experience with grant making and nonprofit management. Feel really lucky to have had the members of our review team who were part of the cycle this year. And it really improved our, the enhanced, I shouldn't say, and improved and enhanced and, and made our, our consideration conversations really robust. And so I'm really grateful for the review team's time and effort to help us. Next slide. So as you all know, there's a future council work session planned for process decision points and recommendations for the vibrant community fund. I think May is what I've heard, but I don't think it's scheduled at this point. Next slide. Turn it over to my capable colleague, Ryan Dames.
And I just wanted to make one additional point from the, the prior slide about kind of the, the future discussions and ongoing efforts. We have, we started, as Kaki said, we started this process a couple of years ago, trying to make the improvements and meet the needs that we were hearing from council in the community with this process. And we've started the process. We by no means think this is a finished process or that this is a perfect process. We are taking steps and we feel like we are moving in that right direction. We were obviously somewhat delayed by the events of the past year, but we'll continue to move in that way. And as we move forward and we make those changes, you know, we're looking at the process side of it. We'll continue to involve council with, with these discussions and these decisions. And so even those members of, you know, I know there were several of you who were not involved in the initial discussions of the changes to this process. You will be much more involved as we move forward with continuing to tweak and change the process and, and make these improvements and these changes to, to get to the process, I think that everyone envisions in the end, which is our, you know, the end goal. So I just did want to point that out because I know there are some, you know, there's some, a few of yours feel like you were playing catch-up last year because you weren't really involved in these decisions. And so not as Kaki explained, all the changes that have happened. The changes moving forward, you would definitely be more involved and more a part of as we go forward. Now we can go on to the next slide, right? Okay, so Kaki had referenced.
Make one comment about that. I still want to put a plug in right now for the staff member for the Measurements and Solutions Office that the city desperately needs. Because even, you know, one thing that's been clear, we haven't gotten much work done in the group, but that is going to take, like this is not going to be a process that's going to be able to be handled well if we do not have that staff person. And so that's important.
So as I would say, so the, and FY, beginning FY21, we started making the, the funding determinations and decisions based solely on the merit of the applications and the scores from the current year's review and was not based on any prior allocations. And the way we had done this was as Kaki. And the way we had done this was, as Kaki outlined, we have the application scoring, whether it be exemplary, solid, fair, poor or weak, and then the important, the priority importance for essential, important, helpful and no direct connection. Last year, we were able to fund three of those categories, the exemplary essential, exemplary important and solid essential categories. For FY, based on how the, the scores for the current year came in for the FY 22 process, we were able to increase the percentages in all three of those categories that were funded last year, the percentage of the request that we were able to fund. And we also were able to add funding, a, a level of funding to those, those agencies and programs that fell within the solid important category. And again, because it's independent reviews from year to year and, and obviously outcomes change, measures change as we go through a pandemic, the lens through which the reviewers view these programs and their importance has also been changed and altered. So that led to some shifts in the overall scoring. I did want to point out that the actual dollar amount did not change throughout this process. It, it, it was actually increased slightly about $7,000 or $7,500 for the current year. But this just shows a funding breakdown of where the funding went, where this entire 2.26 million went for these funds. And as you can see, there's still, even with that, there's still about $1.3 million in unfunded requests, 570,000 from agencies that only received partial funding in these categories that are shown here. And then another 757,000 from agencies that were proposed to receive no funding. Next slide. So for the next few slides, they're kind of, they are organized around the six adopted priority areas that Ms. Dimick had mentioned earlier. We're going to focus on the agencies and programs that received the funding in each of these. Our intent is to go through all of these slides and all the agency funding slides and then have a larger discussion about the agency funding, whether it be increasing funding for agencies that are already funded or adding agencies that were not funded in this process, kind of in context with the other unfunded and potential changes of the FY 22 budget. So we'll go through and highlight what was funded in these areas right now. And then as we go through the next several slides, you'll notice also, excuse me, let me backtrack. Sorry, I got ahead of myself. After we, we, as I was saying, we'll go through and highlight what was funded. And then once we get to the end, if there are questions about what wasn't funded or those agencies that may have received only partial funding, we can, we'll be happy to answer those. And we'll also, you know, we have to talk about the other items we have on our potential changes list for, for the budget. As we go through the next few slides, please note that many of these programs and agencies meet multiple priorities. And so that the agencies self-selected their priorities and they're able to select up to two. These, the way we have them organized is based on their primary alignment. But for examples, using MACA Head Start, primary alignment is education and youth. However, there is an equity component to that as well. So some of these may fall within several priorities. And so just wanted to point that out, that it's not, they only meet this one priority. Some of them, some of them may only meet one priority, but many of them are meeting multiple priorities. As you can see, for education and youth as the multiple, or as the primary, excuse me, primary alignment, had 16 programs and about $900,000 worth of requests. And of that, we funded about $690,000 through these programs. Next slide. This is our community and public safety programs. And again, as you can see, there was 900,000, or excuse me, $675,000 of requests through these nine programs. We were able to fund about 516,000 or 17,000 in the community of public safety. And all, again, there was agencies that were in all four of the quadrants that we were able to, to fund this year. Next slide. This is our affordable housing category, 11 programs, just shy of $900,000. And the funding allocations came out to about $540,000 for this, for this group of applications. Next slide is our health programs. Again, we had agencies that fell into all four quadrants of our matrix that we, we're proposing to fund. 11 programs requested funding through this with, that aligned primarily as the top priority with health. About $644,000 worth of request and we funded $240,000. Next, jobs and wages. This was the area that had the smallest or next to smallest amount of applications, only three program applications and roughly $70,000. And two programs were funded under the jobs and wages priority at about $26,000, $27,000.
Ryan, can I stop you a second on the community investment collaborative? In our book, that's shown as a 3B, not a 2B. Did that get changed?
Um, that, I think that is a typo in that book. I'll have to double check that, but.
It also shows no money allocated for it, so.
Okay, I'll have to, I will have to double check that, but based on the scoring that I had been sent, this is when we were putting together the matrix. This is where, what we had in there. And I believe this is also reflected in the budget document for community, for CIC, so.
Okay, thanks.
Those are intent. The final category is equity. Again, there was three programs that selected equity as their primary priority area. There were 14 other programs that did identify equity as one of the priorities that they helped meet. However, it was not necessarily the primary alignment of that program. So I know equity was a new one, a, a new priority area for FY 22. And I didn't want council to think that we didn't get any applications for this. We did have these three applications and there were several others that selected this as, as a priority. It was just that these were the, there were three that were the primary priority and one received funding. That was the Sin Barres program.
So what were the three?
So it was Sin Barres, the Fountain Fund and Legal Aid Justice Center. I'm going to get this program wrong, but it's the racial equity law program. I know I butchered that name, but you understand that program. Those were the three that selected this as the, the primary.
It's called Support for Community Advocacy on Racial Equity.
Thank you.
Mr. Snook, the slide is correct for CIC. The book was a typo.
Okay, so moving on to the next slide is our arts and culture agencies. And I'm going to turn this back over to Ms. Dimick to explain this review process a little bit more.
So for really many, many years, for certainly more than the five years that I've worked for the city, the arts and culture organizations have expressed frustration that the process that they're asked to go through to seek funding is prioritizes and benefits the more traditional social service agencies and, and requires that they contort to have outcomes related to those as opposed to more traditional arts and culture outcomes. And so they had asked that we had essentially promised several years ago that we'd go through a process to try to create a more responsive tool and process for their decision-making. And so because of the reasons described earlier, we were not able to do as much as we had hoped. But we did want to make a process that was geared towards arts and culture specifically. And so thankfully, the county had already done that work. And so we borrowed their process, which actually mirrored in some ways a process in both Ohio and Richmond that we had looked at and asked them to submit their applications using that tool. And so there's, I don't think there's any new, well, there might be one new arts and culture organization or, or application in there. But the vast majority of them were ones that we had received in years past and so are familiar to you all. We'll continue as we revise the process overall for vibrant community fund. We'll continue to try to create a more responsive arts and culture process.
Next slide is, these are our capacity building grants that were, that Kaki spoke of where they request up to $10,000 for capacity building. There are eight programs that requested capacity building grants. There was a review process with this and, and in order to become, be deemed eligible, they had to meet certain criteria in terms of score, in terms of important and equity score as well. And priority was given to those agencies that had a high equity score. And both of these applications received the high equity scores and were recommended for funding. And next slide. So that concludes all the agency-specific information we had. Before we, we went into the discussion, and we can go back to any of the particular slides that you'd like to, but before we went into the, the, kind of got into the weeds of the discussions of the individual agencies and the particular agencies, we did want to show this slide, which is what we're calling potential changes to the 22 budget. Additional outside agency funding is one of the areas we've put on here. These, this reflects the list that we came away with from the last council meeting or the last council work session we had with you last week. We feel that we've captured, you know, this captured most of what was talked about. And wanted to, before we started talking about agents, look at this holistically and talk about additional agency funding in terms of looking at it in additional ads for the budget as a whole. Because as, you know, as we did show you, we do have that additional funding available for FY 22 between the, the changes in our B poll receipts and the, the two expenditure reductions. However, as we said, there's always more, the needs always outpace the funding. And so this was to try to tee up those conversations so that when we are talking about potentially adding agency funding, we're also looking at it in relation to other needs that council has mentioned that they want to add to the budget. And so with that, I will turn it over to any questions, conversation about agencies or any other items that council may want to discuss with us or amongst themselves.
I just want the, the, one of the proposals that I submitted was the Office of Innovation. And then in, within that was the Solutions and Management and Measurements Office creation. And so I would like for them to be added in future slides so that it's at least part of our, you know, discussion and thought process. And for, and whenever it's done, that it'll be clear that it was brought up for many years, the entire time, at least for the measurements and solution piece that, that I've been here. So I would like for that to happen. I also, if we could add the employee compensation for the COLA, and I would like for council to have that discussion. We already know that the comp study, and I'm interested in where that, you know, where we are in that process. We know we're going to have to start somewhere there, but I think we all know that not all employees within the organization are, you know, kind of challenged by the lack of COLA. And I think if our top level management, we keep having the discussions every time we have increases. When there was the $15 an hour, it was compression issues for other employees, which translated into the why we shouldn't do this. And I think that if we can start having the discussion on whether even increasing, like the, giving the COLA to the managers and below conversation, if that eventually will help us with the compression issues that will come up as we keep increasing the very top layer that no one has said that our, you know, director leveling up are not, you know, aligned. Or maybe there's information we don't have yet, since we don't have that study. I just think it's an important conversation for us to have, even if there's been some additional possible resources to use for this.
One question that I had for, I guess for Ryan or Kaki, I'm not sure who, in the, on the page, it talks about arts and culture agencies. The Arts and Culture Agencies, there is an entry here for Vinegar Hill, as I assume that's the magazine.
That's the Lighthouse at the Vinegar Hill Theater. I just, I looked that up. I know.
Ah, okay.
That's correct. That's correct. It's, there's programming at the Lighthouse that is a specific request for programming. And then there's use of the theater that is a, has a broader audience and a broader purpose. And so that's a separate funding request.
Okay.
Sorry about that. That was a, a issue of when you copy the chart over, the expanded cell only brought over one line, so.
Okay. All right, that, that clarifies that. And under city-supported events, that's a category that we've seen a number of times in different years. And sometimes it's been apparent, looking back at the budget, what was included in that? And sometimes it's not clear. What is, what is included in city-supported events?
So the city-supported events refers to events where we are not necessarily paying for the event to take place, but rather the city's support of that event. So for example, there's the, there's transportation related to the Dogwood Festival on the Fourth of July, where the, the city encourages the expense to run shuttles and things of that nature. There's cost-related, part of the reason there is a little bit of an increase in the city-supported events for this year is a transfer of some of the costs related to the Grand Illumination. And that's also supported in there. I think I mentioned the Dogwood Festival. I believe there was also, what partially in here is the waiving of fees for, I'm blanking on the festival now, I believe it. I'm, I'm sorry, blanking on the festival. There, there is a festival where we waive the fees. That, that's roughly $2,000 to $3,000 in that amount as well. And so there's, it's just little pieces like that. There's some costs related to security and cleanup for some of these larger city events. And that's, that's what this lump goes to fund.
Thank you.
So I have an example of, I was talking a little bit about this earlier, but, um. The, I think, you know, Michael brought up, I gotta find the page, my notes for the other thing. But FARS requests. Crescent, so Juntos and Cimbarres, I mean, who else can do that work? I'll say it again, so when you, maybe they didn't understand equity and applying for that. But are there other organizations, and I said this last year, who can meet the needs the way they do? And so I think that's important for us to consider as we vote on this. And I, if we could all look at the Piedmont YMCA as I'm giving my example, if I can find this year's. Because I think this is important for us to think about this. So last year, this organization was rated a 1B and this year it's a 1A. And their request was for $68,000 both years. This year, we've increased the city manager proposed funding to 64.6. Last year, they received 37,000, 37.52 was the recommended amount. And I don't know if they were on the slide that, whether that changed or not. You can look in the description for this. And they talk about how much per resident. This year, it's 68,000 for 85 residents. Last year was 68,412 residents. So it looked like that that amount should have been able to be reduced if this information is factual. Something that came up last year. Something that came up last year was that the rate of the income for which they were offering scholarships was way past the income that we are considering. I think the United Way is considering, Social Services is considering for applications of scholarships. And so there should be some uniformity around if they are, because part of their model says that they, part of their funding stream is 72,000 this year from the United Way Early Learner Scholarship Fund. And so to, and I'm sure that United Way, based on what I understand of the Child Care Scholarship, is making sure that that amount that families who apply for that funding fit inside a income stream. And so if we are trying to meet the needs of the families who need it the most, then this is one of those things where it just, it seems a little off. And I brought this up last year too. And I just think it's something that we really needs to look, look at. And if the United Way is meeting the needs, the way that the city is, is aligned with our priorities, then the money, all the funding should go to United Way. And then it would be dispersed out as needed, or the money should go to Social Services to be dispersed out in those income brackets. So that is an example of, you know, just trying to keep this, our, our cost down so we can serve as many people as possible. And also whatever the if council, if it's still 70,000, which I don't know, because nobody ever answered that question last year. But if that's what they're still doing, if that's, if we are okay with that, then we need to say that. And I don't think we are. And then we need to say that too. But we need to figure out the process to make sure that the money is flowing the way we intended to flow.
It is 75 for full price. And then there's two tiers of reduced price and then, then free based on their breakdown. So 70, 75,000 is their threshold for above full freight, below some degree of scholarship. And as I recall, it was, it was, it wasn't a model that they adopted themselves. But it was, it was also, it was tied to some other metric. And I was just searching through their application for care's funding to try to find that. And I'll keep looking for that for you. And, and what I'm hearing is more about having a uniformed expectation for childcare scholarships, regardless of where the childcare is and regardless of what the funding stream source is, whether it's through United Way or it's through us or through DSS, but that it's consistent across the board. Am I getting that?
I think that would be helpful.
Kaki, do you? One thing I am noticing is obviously we've got some changes from this year to last year and who rated what. I was curious if you could help me understand a little bit better why some of these might have changed from last year's rerating that happened to this year's.
I can certainly give it a try. I didn't. I didn't serve on all the panels and so I wasn't privy to all of the discussions. I did have some general impressions. And of course, there's other folks who are listening in who might be able to weigh in based on what your questions are. So.
Was the criteria any different this year? I thought the criteria this year and the criteria re, that got redone kind of last year was the same.
It was, it was largely the same. I think there were a couple of changes that were about clarity. So there was a couple of repeat questions that we reduced. And we continue to ask the sort of the new questions, sort of, but last year we had asked about pandemic response. And this year we had clarified that we're interested in, and I think we've always asked a similar kind of question, but what would be the impact of not funding the request? So that that was, that was clear that though both the question and the responses had a little more pointedness in our current climate than they had in years past. But other than that, the process was the same. I think the difference of both for last year and this year is of course, the additional ranking of importance, based on importance for meeting the, the council's priority areas. And so that's the biggest shift. I mean, other than, you know, two years ago, we had said to nonprofits that, that every year would be a clean slate, that there wouldn't be a reference to last year's funding. And so this is again, in reference to the feedback that we had received in the 2018 ad hoc group convened by the mayor, which was that if agencies could assume that they were going to get at least what they got last year or some percentage, and they were always going to eat up the pool of available funds. And so it would be nearly impossible, even if you were meeting a really critical community need, it would be nearly impossible to break into the funding cycle unless we said every year is a brand new slate. And so what that means is you're not tied to the request, the amount of the request you had last year. And certainly we saw agencies in the last two years increase the amount of money that they asked for from the city and others that did not. And so that, that, those are the two really big structural changes, I think, for nonprofits.
Can I add that, that, the conversation around that was, you know, to try to give these maybe organizations with fewer resources, the opportunity to kind of compete in a, in a way, I don't. Yeah, we still have some work to do, which I know it's been stated, but yeah.
I guess I'm not trying to pick on the why. I guess I just wanted to, so why do you think, is it based on those council stated priorities from last year that would have caused the why's application to get jumped up like it did this year?
I don't know. I wasn't on that particular panel. So I'm not privy to the discussions, maybe somebody who's listening in who was on that panel or can remember the discussions. But I don't, I don't have the specific, other than what was in the report for why that might have changed.
Okay. I, I wasn't trying, I mean, again, I appreciate it. I know that a lot of work goes into this by a lot of different people. And it's just trying to kind of understand the changes and the differences.
Every year, there's a little, there's subtle changes, at least in the group that's evaluating too. So.
And this year we had more, more than subtle changes. Yep.
Can you, can you speak to that a little bit, Kaki? Just in terms of just the changes that were made from last year to this year in terms of the evaluation group?
So with the review team for many, many years was largely the same. The population of folks who agreed to serve. And they really reflected people with experience, both working in nonprofits and as donors or grant makers. And there was a strong push in 2018 to try to make sure that we included more people who had experience with nonprofits as consumers of nonprofits and more members of a diverse community group, particularly black and brown folks from poorer neighborhoods who are part of this decision-making cycle. And so we've been really intentional about that. And so we're really pleased by this year's review team. We are really, every single one of them was really exceptional. We were very lucky to have Ben Allen from the Equity Center and Juan Diego Wade to join this year's group, among many other folks. So we were, we were thrilled to have the group that we have this year participate in the process.
And just to be clear, how was this group chosen? Who, by whom?
It's by staff. And so we, we, we go out and seek people. And one of the things we also identified from 2018 and, and continue to try to support this effort in every sort of community group that we pull together for those folks who are coming, whose expertise is lived experience that we pay them for their time.
Okay.
Another subtle difference that, you know, as far as how these agencies were reviewed and viewed is, as I mentioned earlier, it's the lens through which the importance was also viewed. When we, they were reviewed last year, it was before we really had even, maybe there was a whisper of the coronavirus. And so now we've lived a year through the, you know, we were almost a year through that pandemic at that point when we started to review it. So the importance of some of the more pressing and urgency needs such as food, shelter, those kinds of things tended, you know, if you look through the scores, those tended to score slightly higher because of the lens that the reviewers were reviewing things through as well. And I think that, that does some of the subtle changes on the important side. You know, many times when you look at the year-over-year rankings on the, what I'm going to call the quality side, there's very little change in that. I mean, there's some agencies that will, will come up, but you don't see large swing, huge swings in how those agencies are viewed from a year-over-year basis. But there is some changes and you know, again, the pandemic did affect, one of the things we look at is outcomes. And the agencies, you know, Mayor Walker mentioned reserves for the contractual agencies. For these agencies, we do also ask about operating reserves and capital reserves to make sure that they, they are a good, solid use of taxpayer dollars. And so those are, those are all things we look at and that the pandemic did play an effect on some of those that may have changed the score a few points here or there. But it's all those little things throughout that have caused the, the variations through the scores.
So I think one of the questions is, obviously we, it's been presented like this is the recommendation for funding the, the money that we have. But if additional funds become available or we determined to allocate additional funds to this, this category, what are some of the ways that we might determine to allocate those additional funds? I'm curious of staff's thoughts on the approach the council might take if, if we decide to use some of the, some funding that we are aware of. Again, we have to remember this is one-time funding that we're talking about that's coming up now. Also recognizing the need right now is just so significant.
Sure. Um, one, one of the things I wanted to.
Real, real quick, while you, before you answer that, I still think that we need to look at this separately. What we would find with one-time funding and still having a conversation as if that funding did not exist, I think is important. So if the additional funding wasn't there, would we go with these recommendations? That shield should be a topic of conversation.
I'm happy to have that conversation. If you want to have that first.
No, I just wanted to say that, because I think it's important.
Okay. Um, one of the, and I'll kind of tackle this in two parts. The first is in response to the use of the, the one-time funds. Because of the way we have now shifted our funding recommendations where next year's recommendations will not be based on the current year's recommendations. It really, if you decided to fund an agency in FY22, it really could be a one-time allocation. Because in the past, if you funded an agency at say $90,000, then that was built into the base for next year. Whereas this year, we look at the pool or the pot of funds as a whole. And so each year, allocation of they solely on the merit of the application, not what you've gotten in previous years. Cause that was one of the big things we heard is those, those agencies get in either way up high or way down low, and they can never shift from there and it, and it, it doesn't meet the needs of the rest, the rest of the agencies or even the current agencies receiving funding. So that's one shift we have made. So one-time funds would really be one time, you know, one-time allocation. And then in the next year, they would fight for the, the pool of funds, just like every other agency. So that's part one. Part two, in looking at, you know, if the, the question of if funds become available, where would staff recommend? I think the, we kind of looked at this in, in two different ways. And there's, I turned to the side here to, to look up these charts to make sure I have them in, in front of me. But when looking at the, the unfunded requests, we essentially had, as I said before, agencies that were partially funded that scored within the, the quality and importance ranking to at least receive some funding. There's still 500,000, over $570,000 worth of their request that was not funded. So those were, those were ones where, you know, you could look at this agency received some funding. They were deemed scoring high enough to receive some amount of funding. Maybe you look to some of those agencies first to say that they scored well. Maybe we should increase their ass to be able to get them closer, you know, increase their allocation to them closer to the, the request. And there may be some in the can, almost completely unfunded list, those agencies that didn't score well enough, whether it be within the priority ranking or the, the quality to not receive funding. That, that's, you know, another 750, almost $757,000 of unfunded needs there. And so that would be another area you could look, you know, maybe look at secondarily after, after looking at the agencies that were partially funded. I guess the easy way to do that would be to look at, you know, what fell within each of the particular rankings. And if there was something that potentially on the import, or the importance ranking side for, for the priorities that might, council might see as really needing to be reviewed or re-examined or talked amongst themselves to, just to say, you know, move it into a category that may have been funded. I know that's happened as part of the discussion last year. So that would be, you know, of those agencies that are not funded, that would be another way to look at it. So those are, that's two different ways to kind of look at getting to what, if funds should come available, how, how do we, how would you go about it? Because I know that's, you know, 1.3 million worth of unfunded requests is a big list to try to sift through everything. So I think, you know, there's a lot of time and effort by these review groups to, to come up with this ranking system and these reviews scores. So maybe looking at those first and, and moving from there. Not said that there isn't some needs that, you know, council views as higher than what maybe the, the group did. But, you know, and that's totally within your purview as well. But it's just different ways to go about cutting from the, the same apple.
Well, I have a number of questions about some of the agency recommendations. You know, I know as was mentioned at the beginning, you know, there's how we spent a lot of staff turnover, the pandemic hits. You know, this is readjusting to meet immediate needs created by the pandemic, which is a new priority. But similar to last year, you know, I still question a little bit whether the, where the process is at is too blunt an instrument or isn't quite meeting what our actual goal of some of the changes are. I've been on council to go through the old process, so I don't know. It may be the same exact challenge or it used to be even worse. I don't know. But because of that, going through it, you know, some of the things I was trying to look at is, you know, get a sense of the impact of the program, but as well as what percent of the operating budget of the program request came from the city. And just thinking about how, you know, one unfunded request, if it's 1% of their budget, is going to have a much smaller impact than if it's 50% of their budget. And so just having gone through it, some of the things that jumped out to me were both the drug court and the therapeutic docket. You know, as others has mentioned before, I don't know, it, it seems like those are just sort of more permanent parts of, you know, like our criminal justice system locally, more than competitive nonprofits. But I know their requests were about 20% of their operating budget for both the drug court and the therapeutic docket. So question both the impact of there is whether it's, you know, seeming like that may be a higher priority than it was judged, just given the impact on the local court system and the role they play. The other one was CRHA's housing voucher program. Also because, you know, it jumped out at me because it's important was at the highest level, but it's like application quality was low. So definitely curious to get more information about what that is and what impact it would have to not be funded. My concern is that if we don't fund that, we're basically just going to be in a situation where people who could have been housed with housing vouchers just won't be able to, because it's not funded. But I don't know all the details and it would definitely be interested in knowing where they're. And then the two others were FARS requests. I know both of them, their city funded portion was about 50% of their budget. So to not fulfill those requests is basically going to, at least over the next couple of years, end those programs. And I know last budget cycle, you know, we'd readjusted them to, to have those be higher priorities. And I see that being. And I know last budget cycle, you know, we'd readjusted them to, to have those be higher priorities. And I see that being. You know, a, a top priority for us, especially as the redevelopment process is, you know, starting to get underway. And then the final was Legal Aid Justice Center's legal services. I think that one was about 20% of their budget as well. And just the impact that would have on their ability to provide just basic legal services to residents. So those are the ones that jumped out to me. You know, when I added those up, if, if they were fully funded. It would be about $312,000, I think, for that gap there. But what I just can't wrap my head around at all is figuring out like how all these things fit into that matrix. And if we're thinking about. If even some of these or all of them, how to meet it, like, are we just how, how we would go about that in terms of like. Shifting where things are ranked. Or I would note, you know, I know at the beginning of the budget presentation. You know, it was noted that there have been some revenue changes. There are about. $300,000 that have been cut from the police budget compared to our last presentation, both for the Mabel data units. As well as to positions. And so I, and you know, maybe. You know, there's an opportunity to shift that money into this unmet need here, since we already know we've had that adjustment in revenue. And whether that's the best approach or just, but I, the thing I really can't wrap my head around is I've tried to figure out like. How everything would play out if you shifted into the different matrices and what percent is being funded. But I guess the bottom line for me is it would seem like those requests. Again, particularly because of the percent of the operating budget there are in their alignment with our priorities would be important to try to fund as much as possible. However, we get there.
I'll, I'll just, the decision about how to. Move them around or to fund them is entirely up to council at this point, but around the issue of the, of the instrument, I think you're absolutely right. I'm not sure if I would describe it as a blunt instrument at this point, while we've put a lot of work into it, trying to make it as transparent and. And objective as possible, but these are also human beings. And so we, we are, you know, we, we are. Able to influence processes directly and indirectly, intentionally, unintentionally. And so. There is a level of subjectivity that's inherent in the process is almost where we're not having it be like a scored by a robot or an algorithm. And so that can be a really good thing. And I will say that, that even in the five years since I've been working for the city, there's been a shift in expectations. Around what should be valued and what should not be. And so this instrument. Has not been able to keep pace with that shift in council interest or priorities. And so that's something for us to consider going forward, how to create a more flexible tool that can shift. For example, percentage of overall budget in years past. That those organizations who had the smallest percentage of their budget coming from the city council. Had the higher scores and the greater interest because it seemed they were less reliant on city funding. As opposed to those organizations now who need the funding more than, than other agencies might be. You, you all might be more inclined to say they need it so much, we need to give it to them. And so that's just a philosophical difference in the way sort of. Organizations have been valued in terms of their economic viability. And so that's just one example and that there are a number of those kinds of things embedded in the tool. The tool was originally created with a, a set of best practice nonprofit administration strategies inherent in it. And so some of those things you all would continue over time. Council members have continued to value other things less so. And so. There, there is something to be said about looking at the tool in a way that, that makes it flexible enough to accommodate sort of shifts in philosophy. I would also say that, that, and, and this is something that two years ago, or maybe even a year ago, I'm, is difficult now with pandemic. So some, some time ago, I talked to you all about the fact that the, that one of my assessments of the, of the vibrant community fund or ABRT process. I can't remember what we're calling it then, is that it was trying to do two or three things at once. It was trying to fund those organizations that needed a match from us. It was trying to fund those organizations that like the drug court or mental health docket who we would, that, that at the time council would say is automatic. Of course, we want to continue to support them. It's a critical resource. It was also trying to fund organizations that were. Up and coming and responding to a critical service in a really flexible, immediate kind of way. And so the way you might assess those two things is really different. But we were trying to assess them all using the same product. And so I think. You know, part of what I hope we'll talk about in May is a way to sort of divvy up the process so that it reflects more of those kinds of interests in a way. That allows us to develop different tools for the assessment or the monitoring of those going forward. And so I think you're absolutely right. This is. The frustration around those kinds of distinctions is felt every single year. And so it is important that whatever our conversation is in May includes some, some aspect of that.
And I just, you know, want to say again, I was looking for something, but I have two reports here. This is a report from a steering committee that was convened in September 2010. To look at. The same discussion that we're having now. And then this is the report, and I'm just pointing these out because they were before I got here. To, from that, the UVA. The consulting clinic class at the Baton School. This is the report they did. And so I think this is a little bit, this was 2017. But it says here in both of these reports about the final decision. And in this report, it, it talked about how uncommon, even though the decision lies with council. The final decision. So these are recommendations. And I think this is the report where it stated the 2010 report. That the city, the reviewers on this board, which was primarily staff and then other organizational leaders. Understood that they were making recommendations to counsel. So I just want to highlight that. And it was nothing about that process that was part of. The change process. I understand and it says in here somewhere and I'll find it and point it out just so I didn't, I didn't write this, but that. You know, that that was made clear to the committees. That this was just recommendations. They understood that they would be doing a lot of work and then we would be. You know, be reviewing it. But I think the bigger point in all of that is that we've been long before. You know, Kaki said her five years, long before then with this 2010 report that we have been having some of these same. Same conversations. And I think that one of the ways to make sure that there's a. Better process that we can trust is to make sure that those positions. Are in place to do, to do that. And longer term, we should be able to serve people better. If there's someone who understands how to put those. You know, metrics in place and evaluate them across the board, along with the people who also understand the need for these things.
I think that multiple, many of us have shown support for. We do need to have a resource doing, focusing on, on that facet. I think that. The way that some of the, you know, bringing into our budget discussion, the way it was presented was part of a much bigger kind of construct of a department. Which I think that right now we can't bite off that right now. I think we need to focus on the specific roles that we need to have filled. Right now. And I, I don't disagree that that's not something that we should, I think that's something we should be prioritizing in terms of like that role.
Yeah. So this was the first year that it was part of that bigger package because that's the office of innovation. This was the first year that was presented. But the last budget meeting, I talked about the fact that no matter what we do, that that measurements and solution. Staff member to start, which it'll probably be two staff members, but even if we get started with one staff member and that that person. Either whether it's, I think, you know, the budget, if it's, if that office isn't created, then that would be a position in the. Makes the most sense to be with the budget team. To start that process. But I've talked about that before that bigger package was presented. So just, I just want to make sure that we all heard the support of looking at that. And figuring that out and that should end up on the slides somewhere.
And Mayor, I just wanted to address one of the earlier points you made about. The, these being recommendations. I think one of the things, you know, I sit on the majority of these review groups as, as a staff member. And I will, you know, we always tell them at the beginning, you know, these are recommendation, you, you're going to, like you said, you're going to do the work, these recommendations. You know, we've built it to be as. Objective as possible. However, there's always some subjectivity to it. And, and again. As the reviewers, they don't get the emails and the midnight phone calls from the agencies and from the. Citizens that are talking about these various programs. So there's, there's that extra layer that, that comes into this, these determinations. But you know, it is understood that. Even, you know, they are going to be recommendations and there are going to be some that are following, some that are not. And it's just. It's not, you know, obviously you can't take those things personal. This is. Recommendation to council has much bigger things and priorities to, to, to kind of balance all of this against as well. So.
Well, and it, it should be said, I mean, even in the, you know, the things I laid out, still the, the, the majority of it is still. Driven by those recommendations and that work. So it's not as if like every single thing was, was off by any means. But again, to me, it sounds like there's sort of two parallel conversations, like the decisions we need to make this immediate budget cycle. And then that. Longer term work of adjusting the process. And. Again, like I said, where I'm at is, is those agencies outlined and I'll, I'll send those out in an email as well. You know, I'm definitely interested in, in trying to as much as possible, fill the gap on those between their request and what's funded. Particularly some of them that, you know, got zero funding. And. You know, in, in the context of, you know, the, the, you know, cuts that have been made to the police department's budget and also, you know, the influx of stimulus money that we're never going to get. You know, I, I would be interested in, you know, potentially even. Filling those funding gaps, not by cutting other agencies, but by providing more money into the vibrant community funds that, you know, is. Potentially made possible by those cuts we were presented with. But that's where I'm at. And I understand it may involve like, also involve like. You know, shifting some of these ratings into 1A or 1B and just figuring out how exactly all that works out. That's, again, that's the thing I really can't wrap my head around. What that would look like for each one. But again, that's where, that's where I'm at is definitely wanting to try to. Match the unmatched, unmatched funding request for those specific agencies.
Also, I think we also need to look at that, for the last two years now, we've had jail savings. And looking into those programs, including the public defender's office, which assist us in those savings. Including the therapeutic, the mental health therapeutic docket and the. Drug court, both of, all three of those. Help divert from bed days, which then. Bring down our bill from the jail. So. Just something to think about on that end too.
One question that I had, I remember last year and I. It was my first experience with the process. And so I may have been misinterpreting some of what was sort of zooming by. But it seemed to me that there was. Let's say some flexibility about what the top end was of the amount of money that, that we could allocate through the vibrant community fund. And while it wasn't. It wasn't something we could just continue to inflate. There was a point where the staff. We were reduced from 97% to 90%, some of the allocations and that kind of thing. There was also a sense. That I, I, I remember having the sense at one point that it seemed like there was. You know, some flexibility for the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars. It started off as $2.3 million. It got reduced to $2.1 million. I think we added a little bit extra along the way. What sort of parameters are we dealing with here? Is this, is, is there anything that's, that's hard and fast about the. 2,266,000 figure?
So I'll kind of spin this back to the, the context of, you know, kind of the message and, and what we've been speaking with you guys about over the, the last couple of weeks is that. This 2.6 million is baked into the bottom line of our 190 million dollar or 100, with the changes, it will not be 191 million dollar. General fund budget. And so. With that, as, as you all have, as we've heard you repeat and say it several times. It's a trade-off or a decision. If, if you add something, then you're going to have to remove from somewhere else because it's, we don't have. An unallocated pot of funds sitting over here for, for agencies. I mean, that is a decision point that we could talk about in May. Hey, would you like us to have, say, set aside a hundred thousand dollars for council to make, to have unallocated so that council can. Add during this process that, but that's a, a different discussion. So again, as we move through this, any addition on. Of, of funding on the agency side here. Again, that's why we put this, you know, we've had that final slide. Needs to be put in context of any addition here needs a reduction somewhere else. And it may also mean that these other things on this. Larger list, it's going to make it more difficult to do any of those additions as well. So you need, you know. Instead of, I know it's very easy to get into the. Kind of silo of looking at just the agencies. However, that's why we were trying to, to take a step back and look at overall, you've got, you know. The amount for the agencies has been set in the budget. Anything, any additions or, or if you, there's subtractions. I don't want to. Say, say that that's out of the realm of possibility as well. If there's additions or subtractions, that would change the overall funding within the total budget. And how that relates to the context of all these other things that we've been talking about with the employee compensation pieces, restoration of. Areas that were reduced, all the lists that council had given us as well. So I would put it in that context of, you know, looking at it at big picture. As that amount has been really set without extra flex.
And I would just add to, to that, along with the big list, if there are council initiatives such as the. Office of Innovation Proposal, Mayor Walker, that you're talking about. I mean, now would be the time we would love to hear about those things. So that we can get them on a list and we can prioritize them. Or not prioritize them, I'm sorry, but we can at least keep them on the burner for you as we have these discussions and so that. We are not, as Ryan talked about, you know, speaking in a vacuum. So that we're only talking about agencies tonight and then, you know, the comp, the, the merit another night, but so that we can have a more comprehensive. Conversation about ads or, or takeaways.
Yeah. And I thought that information was shared with you all. That first meeting that we had. With Mr. Blair was back in December.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't, I have not seen the specifics. So, yeah.
Council needs to discuss the scope of that because I think there's a lot of different way. We've given feedback to each other among ourselves. I think it's important that we kind of. Are, are clear on kind of where we are coalescing around with the scope of that might look like.
Whether we are in agreement or not, there should just be a process that for it to, it still is, should be, I keep mentioning it. It has been known, whether we fund it or not, it still shouldn't be able to be talked about and listed.
That's fine.
I would say that earlier we do that because we're, we're rolling through these work sessions pretty quickly. You know, we're working on adopting a budget by April 13th. So if there are new things, there's no. One work session that's just about new things. And so, you know, sort of our plan here is to. Come back to you at the beginning of every work session, just like we did tonight and say, hey, here are the things we know that have changed. And again, an opportunity to have the conversation if there are ads or discussions that you all want to have as a collective group about. What needs to be, what you'd like to see added or changed. We kind of need to do it as we go because we're going to get to the end here and then we're going to run out of time.
I think some of it is just that. We know we're not in a budget situation where we can be adding a bunch of things. And so I think council was trying to be cognizant around. The types of things that we're putting on that list of things to add because we already can't do the top things that we've already stated. And then you put on the slides today. And so. I mean, I'm, I'm all about us putting everything out there and like parsing it out, but I think that was part of our, our thought process.
And I think that's, and I don't want to speak for Chip, but you know, as he said, we're starting 2023 budget. At the same time and.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, as you put these things forward. You know, as new dollars develop or not, and as Ryan mentioned, you know, an ad is a minus. We can still keep that all in play and the list doesn't have to go away when the budget is adopted.
Yeah. And that's what I think is just like the. Conversations that we have with the. Employees, you know, the unfunded list funded, you know, that and how we kind of nick away at that is the same. The same process. I, and I had a note, another note, but that's another conversation. I, um, and I had a note, another note, but that's another conversation, I guess. I can't find it. But, um, it's, it's just important for us to have, just like we just brought up this measurements and solutions position, I have been bringing that up for years. So that's not a new thing. And so if we had the same kind of list, it would just kind of stay on there. And when we want to get to it, we would discuss it. Another question I have about tonight, um, with the conversation right now is, so if we look at AHEP on this, um, last year, they had the same request, uh, same number of C residents. The proposed funding was 165 last year. And I know that it's not, it's a step next year and there's, um, new people who are evaluating the program. But this year it came in at 187.5. Um, so I'm just, you know, in terms of looking at these as the parallel conversations, I think it's if, you know, we are now making decisions based on, um, the fact that this American rescue package is, um, coming and there will be future package. But I think we also need to keep all of these things aligned for the future. So the Boys and Girls Club is also in there, um, and I would not be all over the place if I could find my notes from earlier and I, I took some. But, um, that just jogged my memory. The Boys and Girls Club is in here for an after school program, which I'm sure was written based on a normal year. But they are only from my understanding, um, they only have students who are going through their virtual learning program. They're not, because a parent contacted me about, um, the fact that she needed somewhere for her kids to go after school and they weren't accepting. You know, students. So what was the conversation, uh, around that? And then in an ideal world, I think that the 183,000 dollars that I think the Boys and Girls Club was the place, the, one of the organizations that received that, and then the YMCA is that tracked consistently? And then are these organizations who are applying, are they also, any of them? Can they receive the, um, did they receive CARES dollars and can, uh, will they receive the American Rescue plan? I don't, that, that name is interesting, but can they receive those dollars to, what is it, ARC? And maybe, and if so, are we asking that question too? Because that is very different from a smaller organization who may not be able to receive the funding, um, to a larger organization who can apply for some of these funding, uh, funding streams directly. And then that should impact like the discussion around who gets funding, um, from the vibrant communities based on need, one-time funding. And then it should be a, I think a separate conversation about whether we then give additional monies out of the rescue plan.
Well, now to, to the question, the broader priorities, you know, I stated my thoughts on vibrant community and these bigger picture priorities, I would say, you know, should even indirectly, you know, there'd be money made available because of this new stimulus money. You know, I would still rank my top priorities as funding for the CAF and trying to get to that $3 million level. Um, I know that's a big lift, but we just adopted a housing plan that called for 10 million a year and we've got to start beginning to get to that commitment yearly. And I know last year, um, you know, the pandemic necessitated, um, you know, removing all funding in CIP for CAF projects. So I think it could be an area where there's a lot of one-time expenses for basically projects that are shovel ready, um, affordable housing projects that would be able to go for, able to put it there. Um, and perhaps, you know, in, in a process, there may be other things for rental relief or eviction prevention, but I think we could get a lot of bang for our buck if there's money freed up to put it there. And again, those staff positions for the climate action planning process, um, as well as the recommendation for in the affordable housing plan, whether it be directly in the city or indirectly outside of the city, investing to provide right to counsel and eviction cases. And I, I do think that'll be a very immediate priority, um, once these eviction moratoriums fade out. I think the number of people, um, nationwide who will immediately be months behind on rent and mortgage payments is multi-millions. So, you know, that's definitely going to be a big hit. And then finally, you know, thinking about these bigger priorities, like about next year's budget. I know it may not be possible this budget cycle, but you know, the General Assembly has given localities the authority to implement a tax on single-use plastics. In exploring that, both for the environmental benefit, but, uh, we could expect to perhaps raise a couple hundred thousand dollars and we could potentially earmark that for the climate action planning process or green retrofitting homes to reduce energy costs, you know, all kinds of climate related things. So I know that's more, you know, that's probably more next budget cycle than now, but, um, I see that as a potential opportunity.
I just wanted to add two thoughts to things I've said before. The first is Mayor Walker, uh, I will join in saying that I think measurements is an important step forward that we need to be taking. I have some quarrels with exactly the proposal you circulated, but I have no quarrel with the idea that we should be looking for ways to measure the success or failure of the plans and the, the programs that we're funding. Uh, and I hope we can figure out a way to, to do that, uh, that, that's frankly good financially for everybody. The second point that I just wanted to make is that I, I would, I served for about 20 years on a committee that had as one, as one of its main tasks, making grants to social service agencies, to nonprofits. 20 years is a long time. In 20 years, uh, I, I saw a lot of different philosophies come and go. And there were times when one particular notion was, was popular, was thought to be important. And you know, at one point we were trying to encourage more groups to the sort of startups and funding startups. And other times we would be sitting there saying, man, those startups, they really, you know, they, they bombed out, they wasted our money. Let's go back to the tried and true organizations. I just want to caution us not to be too formulaic, not to be too inflexible, not to be immune to the, hey, that's a great idea impulse. And if we can, uh, balance or leaven the rest of the mixture with that kind of an attitude, rather than obsessing over exactly what rules we want to follow to get to our final result, I think we'll be happier in the long run. I, I just hope we don't get bogged down in trying to, to perfect the procedure because it's never going to be perfect.
Um, Mr. Boils, when would you say, um, staff will have taken their first pass at some of the priority needs that they may be, they'd be identifying across departments with this potential funding that's coming?
By the end of next week.
Okay.
I mean, we can, we can at least start getting our, our list, even if we don't have the details to those. Very similar to what we were talking about, you all were talking about just earlier of, um, you know, the important thing is to, to get the ideas, get the list started. And then we can start looking at the, the financial details.
The only thing I would just add, you know, not to be, uh, you know, burst the good news, but the one thing is that we still are a long way from knowing how we're going to finish FY21. Um, and Ryan.
Chris, that was on my list of things I was going to say.
That monthly report to you next, um, next week actually, and there's a big number to make up, um, there. So there is some of this money, while it's a big number, some of it's probably already spoken for.
Yeah, that was actually the thing I think we need to look at first and understand what that volume is. And also just some of that reserve because I think that it's important for us to be planful and, and have some kind of cushion with so much unknown ahead. And so, um, I certainly hear that.
And, and Heather too, I, I would add, a lot of that list is already there. Considering the budget cuts that, that we made during the budget process. I mean, that would be where we would start with what the departments have already asked for. We just didn't include it in the recommended budget. Yes, yes.
But I am with, I am with Michael in terms of just thinking about one-time things that we can allocate. I do think that getting the CAF to a healthier place on the CIP side is, is an area of, of priority for me as well.
And the only other thing I would add, just in terms of managing expectations, um, one, it's, we're probably still a ways away from even getting the check. There's a lot of processes to still happen. And the other thing is before we ever finish out year end, we're probably looking early fall at the earliest from having any indication there. So just to sort of manage expectations in terms of timing, um, keep that in mind.
It's fun to dream, Chrissy.
I'm pretty sure I, I'm pretty sure I read that while the first check will come, I think within about 90 days of, of the signing or sooner. It could be a year for the second half.
It was early fall until what is known?
The year end. And I don't, um, I think in this call, so I don't want to speak for him, but you know, by the time the books totally close, the audit is complete, the numbers for the year end are final, we're well into the fall. Before we actually have all that information.
I do know there's also concern, um, pretty serious concern that while the localities will be giving, they don't have as many restrictions as the states do. And there's concerns that if the states do not meet their expectations and don't get their second half, that they will withhold other state funding to make up for that, that we will then need our rescue plan funding. Because the states, it sounds like have more obligation and more restrictions. And so there is just some concern that that could happen.
And so I, I just want to make for the outside agency, um, funding, which is the first thing on slide number 22. That, you know, I am interested in whatever capacity that the, um, funding happens in, um, talking about, you know, supporting the Bridge Ministry, Abundant Life, um, Crescendo Hutos, Georgia's Friends House, um, Legal Aid, um, FAR. And there was one more. The Conscious Capitalist. Simba Deras, uh, to the supporting them as, you know, you know, I said this before in previous years, but the number of, um, individuals and families that they serve, um, and they weren't even asking us for money in the past. We really need to, you know, take a look at, um, and then, uh, CRHA requests. And I don't know if we've served the need for the vouchers with the other allocations that we have given to them. So that's a question that I have there. I still have the questions about the employee compensation and would like to look at the original question that I asked versus, and if out of this one-time funding, there are bonuses that would make up, um, the difference. And if we, and I think instead of just assuming morale issues that we should have that, um, you know, conversation. The Affordable Housing Fund, I understand, but, um, if nothing else, moving that baseline for the, um, chat program to the 35,000 and under, which if we had continued every year, it would be up to the 45,000, would, would, we would be considering this year. To that first category is something that I would like for us to look at. The additional new positions, um, would like to list the Office of Innovation and pull out the measurements and solution, uh, at least one staff member adding it to this climate action position and housing eviction specialist, um, the conversion of temporary employees, CAT operators. I, um, again, want to bring back in the other temporary staff members who will be calling back into the city, um, especially Parks and Rec, who had the largest temporary, um, uh, number of temporary employees in the past, as we discussed reopening up and how important that is. There. And then of course you all are going to submit the, um, recommendations for the last one, for the, um, I have one more thing. Oh, the $255,000. So when we're talking about the peace in the streets and the Buck Squad, it would seem to me that if we were aligned with those priorities, and first before I say that, that room, that was on my list too. The, the counselors who attended, I think maybe all of you, or at least three of you attended the Friday ceremony. And, um, you all got their budget way before I did. Um, and so I got it, I think the Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday after that, and I've had conversations with Mr. Gilmore about how few organizations, um, operate from that budget and, um, what scaling up to have a successful organization looks like. So I just want to say that because I think there are some different thoughts about, um, I, about that budget presentation is not how I operate at all. And, um, but I think the work that they're doing is very important and that we need to figure out some funding for both of those groups, um, and the work that they are attempting to continue to do through this time. And if there was a reduction in the police department budget of the 250, 255, then it would seem if we were aligned, that that would immediately go to some of those organizations. And especially if they can't be served during the normal process. So I'd like for us to consider that too.
So just one clarification, just so we're clear on that 255, um, the two, the 55,000 is a reduction of the general fund police department budget. The, the remaining was actually a reduction of CIP dollars that were allocated for MDTs for the police department. So it's not a real $255,000 reduction to the CIP, but I mean, I'm sorry, to the police department budget. It's only 55,000 that's being reduced from their operating budget.
But that, that was a cash funded CIP.
Yeah. So there is that money available. I just wanted to make sure we're clear on the, you know, what we're reducing from the operating budget.
But we also have some cash funded projects in the CIP that we need to be funding, right? And we also haven't put any extra towards our CIP debt burden.
So we're funding the, the debt, the debt transfer, um, is slightly reduced in 22, just simply because the meals tax is reduced. All else is level. Um, in terms of the cash funded projects, you know, that's relative as to if they're, they're always projects that are not funded. That being said, there were $6.6 million of cash funded projects in 21 that were deferred. So it's so that we could create the reserve. So to your point, yes, and yes, um, but just so we're clear.
I think we need to start with our matrix, what we have, and then up here from staff on ways that we can further that matrix based on the, the process that was followed. And understand what dollar amounts go with different scenarios, as Mr., as Counselor Payne was saying earlier, like, are we going to increase our funding to those who already have funding? Are we going to expand the groups that we have along the continuums of the matrix? And see what those dollar amounts are. We don't have endless dollars here. I'm just trying to figure out how we can focus, um.
We don't, I think we need to at least open it up for public comment because we are over in meeting time and, um, to see how that goes. But, um, we do need to decide what is, um, the priorities and then support. And then understand we can't do everything. And I know everybody's everything is different. So that's part of the, but Counselor Snook also just talked about the flexibility and part of what is, what the conversation you were present around the capacity building grants was to help people build. Um, and some of the end of organizations that are applying for capacity building grants, even though they may have a segment within their organization, they want to expand. That was an also the intended, um, That wasn't also the intended, um, idea for very established nonprofits to benefit from those funding either. So there is a lot of work, um, to do there to get P, different organizations and different people running those organizations in a position where they can, um, compete in this regular process. Okay, Mr. Willer, I guess we'll turn it over to you for the public, um, comment.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you're in the audience, we have about 39 people in the audience right now on the webinar. If you'd like to address counsel, you can have up to three minutes. Just click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar to get in line. We have a couple of hands coming up. Uh, first up will be, will be William Washington, followed by Erin Tucker. William, you're on with City Council and you've got three minutes. You'll have to unmute your microphone.
Oh, oh, can you all hear me?
We can.
Okay. Well, thank you. This is, uh, I've, I've logged in. This is Jay James. I, I am, uh, chiming in representing the Bridge Ministry that was just mentioned by Mayor Walker. And I would agree with Counselor Snook about, um, uh, being less formulaic and looking at the bigger picture. We were not initially recommended for funding, and I just wanted to address the feedback that we received from the committee where they rated our application as, as, as in terms of our services being helpful. And I just want to address that specific issue because we provide a service of addiction treatment, helping people overcome incarceration, lack of employment skills, and putting them into productivity so that they can change their lives. These are things you all know about our organization. We've done it for 25 years. But to say that we're just helpful, we have people who come into our program that are one step away from death. And we know about the overdoses of heroin and fentanyl in our own community, substance abuse increasing during the pandemic. And we were only, one of the only long-term programs that I know of in our entire state that stayed open throughout the entirety of the pandemic without receiving any state funding. And that would be the question to ask is how many organizations are able to do that without receiving that kind of support? So we've been doing this on, on, for a long time in terms of serving this community. But to just say that we're helpful, no, we're essential in equity and in public safety. And we've even had individuals in our, that we couldn't get to quickly enough to provide them with substance abuse treatment services or didn't have the resources to support them, and they died. So again, for us to be referred to as helpful when we provide this service to the, to our community. And we know with the priority on criminal justice reform, keeping the jail population low. We brought in 16 individuals from the Charlottesville jail over the course of the pandemic. And we asked for in a budget for, we prepared for 30 people. We were asking for 10,000 per student because our cost is $36,000 we invest per student just for one year, which is approximation is slightly less than, than what it costs to incarcerate. So the, the numbers, if you're looking for an exclamation of the numbers, we get two to four applications a day from the classification department of the Charlottesville jail. Inmates are tested and quarantined before they come to our facility to make sure that we're COVID safe. So I just want to emphasize these points that we are an essential service to this community to protect people's lives and to help them change their lives. And I'm grateful that Mayor Walker brought this to the council's attention. And I'm hopeful that, uh, we will be considered whether it's in the CARES funding dollars or it's in the continuum of the conversation. And with that, um, uh, I believe I'm probably at my time.
Thank you, Mr. James. And just real quick before Erin goes, that was another question I had for on our own. Their funding was flipped.
You hear that, sir?
And so that's just something to look at in terms of, because even as we change this process, if things happen this way, look at their funding from last year and this year, there'll be a lot of questions just about the process. So the general operating, um, they received funding this year, didn't receive funding last year. And then the RAP program received funding last year and didn't receive any funding this year. And I just want, that was one of the notes that I had.
Mayor Walker, I can address that real quick. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt all the comment, but I believe last year that was because council made that flip. I believe it was actually recommended the other way last year. And I may be confusing that with a different agency, but there was.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at the recommendation. So it was, it was an initial recommendation.
All right, we have a new next speaker, which is Angela Cholphy. Angela, you're on with City Council. You've got three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Walker, council members. Uh, thank you so much for the thoughtful discussion here tonight. I just want to raise that last year we asked you to prioritize racial equity in your decision-making. And you did. You partially restored cuts, proposed cuts to FAR, LJAC, and several other organizations whose proposals explicitly addressed racial justice and asked staff to make adjustments to the process to make sure the city's human services funding priorities reflected your commitment to racial justice. This year we are back again to make the same ask. LJAC's support for racial equity proposal was one of only three proposals that explicitly named racial equity as the point, the number one goal of their proposals. Only one was funded for a total of just over $7,000 toward equity as the primary goal. We think that's inadequate. We are also mystified by the proposed cuts to legal services. Last year, our proposal was considered essential. This year, it's only important. It's hard to see how our services could be essential before the pandemic, but only important during it. And I understand why you might think that. We ourselves first really only came to understand ourselves as first responders at the beginning of the pandemic. But here are just some of the things we have done this year that would be deemed, that would not be deemed essential by the Rubrik's metrics. Defending evictions and preventing mass homelessness, including illegal lockouts. Giving people accurate legal information, explaining the rules around an ever-changing patchwork of eviction moratoria and rent relief. Giving information and advice to hundreds of callers to our unemployment hotline and compelling the Virginia Employment Commission to restore benefits to tens of thousands. Helping people who lost their jobs and their employer-sponsored health insurance to get ACA coverage and other public benefits. Helping parents advocate for their children's special education needs during remote learning. Protecting families from abusive debt collectors and recovering stolen wages. And organizing pro bono lawyers to draft wills for our first responders and nursing home residents. These services certainly felt essential to the people who no longer had to worry about their housing, schooling, healthcare and incomes. And they should be considered essential to the city. Lastly, please fund FAR's internship program first. FAR is a model tenant advocacy organization that is in fact the envy of many communities all over this country. Joy Johnson even won a prestigious national award this year for her work at FAR. The internship program is a building block of FAR, ensuring that there is a continuous supply of new leaders who can lift up the voices of residents. Please restore the funding cuts to both organizations. But if you can only fund one, please fund FAR. Only FAR can do what they do, and that is a huge equity consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, our next speaker is Shelby Edwards, who will be followed by Lena Seville. Shelby, you're on with City Council and you've got three minutes.
Hi, Council. How y'all doing tonight?
Hi.
Hi, everybody. Well, my name is Shelby Marie Edwards. I'm with FAR, the Public Housing Association of Residents. I will not take up too much of your time, but I first want to acknowledge, thank you so much for the meaningful dialogue that you all have had tonight. I see and acknowledge all of your hard work. And I also want to say, um, and echo the words that Angela just said tonight. FAR is truly a niche organization, and I know that a lot of nonprofits can say that. But I wanted to say to the full council that our FAR internship program, which I would love if it could be funded, uh, could, if it could be funded, period, is truly niche because we create the next generation, or we at least support, um, the next generation of low-income leaders, much like Joy Johnson, as Angela noted today. And affordable housing is one of the six broad funding priority areas, as we said, as y'all stated at the beginning of this. And yet only one of the program and only one of the programs were funded. So I would definitely ask that the council consider that moving forward. And I also wanted to highlight that the FAR internship program is a really big role in including Lowakan folks in city decisions. And as we were talking in a, in a meeting earlier today, I think it is important that we take this time to create systemic change that will last and systemic change that is beneficial to the people that are being affected. So, uh, again, wanted to plug FAR. Thank you so much for the consideration and, um, looking forward to working with y'all.
Thank you.
Next up is Lena Seville. Lena, you're on with City Council.
Hello, everyone. I will make this quick. I just wanted to let you know that I am here in support of FAR, Public Housing Association of Residents and Legal Aid Justice Center. I suspect that quite a number of the other attendees here are as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up is William Washington, who I do not think is Jay James. Mr. Washington, you're on with City Council.
Can you hear me? Counsel, thank you for this time. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great, great. You know, Jay, uh, Jay been just great trying to give the information and the communication of the bridge. Now we are at a place, as you know, it's been a very tough year. And before this, we, we have been faithful to this community for 25 years now. And changing and working with the police department, working with many different entities. And I can go all the way back to the Moremore Center, the Peetman House that I have been a part of and have impacted their success by supporting them and bringing them into our program. But now we are at a place very clearly that the bridge is needed in this community. Not only needed, but it's called on a lot from Judge Hawkechild, from all the judges from Almar County, Charlottesville. The Commonwealth attorney depend upon us, Martin Kade, who's overseed the jail. We have 10 ATI guys who went out and was released back into the community. Some of them re-offended, came back, and now the N I program is being very successful. I mean, you have heard a lot of these things from Jay. It's time. You know, the bridge have, have not, we don't, we don't get state funding. We have survived in ways that no other organization in our community have accomplished this. You know, mostly community, most, uh, these organizations is, is benefit through state funding. We have not. We have been through hard work, faithfulness and being very strategic with our funding. And we have a facility that paid for. We meet our budget, you know, sometimes it's tough, but we meet our budget. It's something else that in that report that you have about the bridge, about the surplus, that was not a surplus. That was a building that we was building and was a capital campaign and we explained that, but yet still it was, it was explained in a, in a different way. Listen, if, if at any time the bridge is needed, it's needed now. We are not only changing life, but we're giving the leaders of our community the opportunity, our opportunity to have a resource that actually works to change lives, that not coming back into the jail, that becoming the city responsibility to keep paying from 35 to $50,000 a year to take care of grown men that who can take care themselves. That's what we do. 86% success rate. But we can't do it alone no more. We need your help. That's what Jay is trying to say. We, the bridge is going to have to walk away unless we start to getting support. And just thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have, uh, three more hands raised at this time. Next up will be Erin Tucker, followed by Brandon Collins. Erin, you're on with City Council. And you need to, there you go.
Hi there. Hi, City Council. Hi, City Council. Thank you for, I don't know what happened. I had lost my place somehow, but I'm glad to be here with you all. I just wanted to say that I, I also believe that the services that we're providing are essential. We have a small staff of 10, but we are supporting 125 individuals in our communities and the surrounding communities daily. Our, our staff call our members every day to check on them, to make sure that they're doing okay, to make sure that their mental health is taken care of. We offer three to five groups still daily. And we also have two days a week that we're open for our pantry where we're making sure that all of our members are receiving resources that if they don't have internet, we're paying for their internet. If they don't have a computer, we're buying them a computer, a laptop. If they don't have a smartphone, we're getting them a smartphone because we want to make sure that they, that there is no one that is, that has barriers when it comes to technology, when it comes to mental health services. And so I also believe that, um, I know we were rated as important, but I also believe that, um, we are essential in this community. And this is our 30th year, and I don't want to see on our own, um, leave or, or go away because we don't have the funding to continue to provide these services. Um, and lastly, I just want to say that our services have increased substantially since COVID. So we're one of those, those, um, programs that have, uh, have seen an increase in folks that we're serving. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Brandon Collins, who will be followed by Daniella Pretzer. Brandon, you're on the City Council.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Brandon Collins. I'm an organizer for FAR, the Public Housing Association of Residents. FAR is a truly unique organization. We are recognized, um, by the federal government and the local housing authority and hopefully by y'all as, um, the duly recognized resident council and resident advisory board. FAR has been in existence since 1998 and, uh, we are governed by a board of directors that are entirely made up of very low-income residents of public housing, uh, plus one section eight representative. Our board is representative of the population we serve and we have a very active board. Our board is often populated with former interns. When FAR was founded, one of the first things that needed to happen was to establish this internship program. It's the bedrock of what FAR does. And I think you've all seen the information in years past because we go through this almost every year. We're happy to present figures, numbers. It's in our grant applications. And FAR is done right by the public housing community and done right by the city of Charlottesville for many, many, many years. Including right now where you're faced with three major crises, crises. You've got a public health crisis, a housing crisis, and a racial equity crisis. And you've all stated that these are things you want to address. You've all acknowledged that recovery from this pandemic is going to be intense and very long lasting. And FAR, as an organization, has stepped up. Redevelopment is beginning. That would not have happened without our organization. And that would, our organization would not have been able to do that work without the work of the FAR internship program. Giving folks the right information so they can have some determination over the future of their community is not only essential, but it's protecting people and it's doing the entire community good. And I, and I hope you all will continue to recognize that. Fully fund our internship program, and I would say consider increasing, uh, the small amount that was given for resident-directed redevelopment. These, these are essential. I think, uh, as Ms. Cholphy stated earlier, your intentions from last year were very clearly stated. The decisions you made, um, when you were tweaking the recommendations were based on racial equity and doing the right thing by this community. And it's, it's confusing as to how we're in the same position a year later, um, having the same conversation. So, um, have a good evening and we'll see y'all soon.
Thank you.
And we have one more speaker. So if you want to get in line, this is the last call. Daniella Pretzer is up next. Daniella, can you hear us? And you're on with Council. And you're on with council.
Are you? I hope you can hear me. Thank you so much. Daniella Pretzer with the Bridge Line. We serve adults with brain injuries and welcome to March Brain Injury Awareness Month of all months. You know. I just want to say thank you for recognizing how important our services are, and particularly the residential program where people actually have a home and not being homeless in jail, or when they're 30, maybe living with their parents or in a nursing home. So I just appreciate all you do and your support for our program for some year. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Got two additional hands up now. First is Joy Johnson, who will be followed by John Sales. Joy, you're on with council and you've got three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I can. My name is Joy Johnson, 8028 Hard Drive. I am the chair of FAR, and I also is the Section 3 coordinator. I just want to say, echo what Brandon and Angela have said about supporting FAR and supporting Legal Aid Justice Center. One of the things that I'm most proud about is that we have a successful internship program, that there is a lot of people across the state who would like to, you know, clone what we're doing here. Most of the time, our interns, interns are not doing much in the community. But once they graduate from FAR, they're either working or they're serving on a board, or they're serving on FAR board, or they are still involved in the community. So it's not money going waste. I've heard people say, well, you know, where are they because they're not serving on boards? Well, you're looking at low-income residents who have all kinds of restrictions or, or demands on their life. However, the seed is planted, and they might not do it this year. They might not do it next year, but I guarantee you, you will see people who flourish and remember what they learned about federal government, what they learned about state government, and especially, especially what they learn about their local government and how it's run. Again, I just want to say thank you for listening and please fund Legal Aid and FAR. Thanks.
Thank you, Joy. I just want to point out of all these faces, Kaki, you get the shout out.
Next up is John Sales. John, you're on the City Council. Go ahead.
Good evening, Council. I first want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is John Sales, and I'm the executive director of CRHA. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the application we submitted. We did not know if we qualified, so we submitted at the last minute. We are not a nonprofit, and the restriction said nonprofit. So we didn't know if we qualified, so we were really batting around whether we should submit an application before we actually access city. And indeed, they said submit an application. So we submitted at like the last hour. But we put together an application based upon the HCV program, which is a program that is vital to this community. The average income for HCV client right now is $15,080. So if, without a voucher, they couldn't afford to live in a city at all. We've been able to increase our voucher portfolio by 56 vouchers so far. We've received an additional $362,000 for 40 additional vouchers. Thus far, we are projecting a $1.5 million increase for the voucher portfolio program. Last year, our funding was reduced due to not leasing up vouchers. We changed that around this year. We've put out more vouchers than we ever have done before. We anticipate opening up the waitlist again and releasing some more vouchers, which is why we put in this application. If we cannot get the funding, it's going to be hard for families to find housing. Before, we, we've received some CARES funding, and we put all the money into the program to increase the amount of individuals that are leasing up. So it was $57,000. We created two programs, a security deposit program for tenants who received a voucher. And in that security deposit, they were able to keep the security deposit when they leave. So it's providing some direct funding to the families for them to find their next place to call home. We also created a landlord incentive program where we provided a $500 one-time bonus for landlords who provided new units to the HCV portfolio. And it could provide up to five new units to up to $2,500. We also created a new position, a manager position, that's doing outreach to landlords, bringing in new, bringing in new landlords to the program. We found that was one of our biggest issues. Our success rating was a 56%. So almost half of the individuals who got a voucher turned them back in because they couldn't find housing. That's because they didn't have someone working with them to find the housing. They didn't have security deposits. So we are bringing all those things to the table. But without this funding, we're going to have an issue leasing up vouchers, just like we did in the past. So that's why the application was submitted. HUD only funds the admin fee for vouchers. It's, when they did the proration formula, it should be $80 per voucher. They're funding it at $60 something dollars per voucher. So they know they're cutting it. They've always expected cities or states to fill that gap. It does not happen in Virginia. It happens in.
I don't, did this just go off? Because I wasn't paying attention to the timer.
It was like 10 seconds over.
Okay, go ahead and finish. I'm sorry.
No, I'm all done. I won't take any more time.
No, did you have, you sure? My apologies. I thought it went off because I saw it was just at three.
No, I can put it all in email. I can probably better form it that way anyway.
Okay.
And the next speaker is Jody Jackson. Jody, you're on the City Council. You've got three minutes.
Good evening, City Councilers. I appreciate this time that I'm allowed to speak. I had debated on whether or not I should speak, and my hands are actually a little bit sweaty from the comfort of my own home. But I do think it is very important that I do speak out. I am the coordinator of the Charlottesville Admiral Drug Treatment Court Program. And I wanted to tell you a little bit about my day today. So my day started at around 6:00 AM, fielding text messages and phone calls from some of our clients preparing for court, whether it was needing to get off from work or they were nervous about having to appear before the judge because they had relapsed that week. Or they just needed some support in general about being nervous about being successful. I then went to staffing at about 7:45 at the courthouse, met with my team and the judge, and we discussed about 25 people's status. And it was everything from, they'd been sober for about two years now, to someone needed to actually serve a weekend in jail as a sanction for some pretty serious drug use that we were not able to get under control. And after those discussions, we went to the docket. We were able to clap when people got jobs. We were able to celebrate sobriety from alcohol for 22 days. We were able to phase up people and give them gift cards and give them a band of sobriety for 30 days. That was just until 10:00 AM. I then fielded phone calls and text messages from people, a woman who had gotten a new job and sold some jewelry. That was the first time she had done that. I worked on case planning with someone in the parking lot of OAR after doing drug screening for an hour and a half and celebrating those successes and being able to say, great job, you haven't used in 10 days. Then to talking with a young man who's about to graduate in a few months, and he has been sober now for two years. He's 26 years old. He's been using since he was 15, and he says that Drug Treatment Court has saved his life. He will have that felony dismissed in four months when he is completing this program. And that was just before noon. If you are to say that Drug Treatment Court program is not essential, I don't know what is then. And I just wanted to say just a little bit about just a day in the life of a staffer of the Drug Treatment Court program.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comment, Mayor Walker.
Okay. So councilors, unless there are any closing comments, we are 41 minutes over the scheduled time. Everybody's go with.
Yeah, we'll regroup on Monday night.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you, staff, for sticking with us. Thank you for, I know I see some of the directors on here too. So thank you all for being ready for questions, and we will have no further discussions on Monday.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Everybody.
Have a very long day.